Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, February 18th Planning Board Meeting. I'll call it to order. We have everybody here for you folks that weren't at last month's meeting. We have two new members, Bob Layton and Stacy Daigle.
Blank.
Did I do it wrong again? I get the former basketball coach.
That's my old basketball coach.
It's all right. That's the problem you get when you put an 81-year-old in charge of the institution. All right, so we've got that. First of all, we'll look for the approval of the minutes of the January 21st, 2025 Planning Board Workshop, looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for January 21st Workshop.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Next we're looking...
Abstaining.
Noted.
And one abstention. We're looking for the minutes of the January 21st, 2025 Planning Board Regular Meeting. Looking for a motion?
Peter, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for the January 21st Planning Board Meeting.
Okay, a second?
I had a question.
Yes.
I just had a question, but I think I know the answer. And that was the, let me see.
Anne, can you move your mic?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. At the end, the public hearing, we had, no, wait a minute. Well, this matter was brought up about an access road off of Skyview. Yeah, I take it that has nothing to do with this that came up, the concrete company?
Correct.
Okay, good. I just wanted to be sure.
Okay, so did we get a second on that?
You need a second.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Okay, we're moving on. We have no minor staff plan approvals, have no minor change approvals. So we'll go into our hearings and presentations. The first one is a public hearing. It's a site plan review for issuance of an annual renewable special permit for the fifth consecutive year for operation of the Story Brothers gravel pit located at 48 Goose Pond Road, as shown on tax assessor map R07, lot 48. And the applicant representative is Robert Story, the owner of RJT Properties. Jeff, did you have something you wanted to say on that?
Yes, just in full transparency, I work for Milton Cat. I'm one of 1,700 employees. Story Brothers is one of Milton Cat's customers. I don't have any direct business dealings with them. I feel I can vote objectively and fairly in the situation, but I just need to, in full transparency, share that with the board.
Thank you. What does the board's wish on this matter?
I don't see any conflict of interest.
Okay, then I'm looking for a motion to find no conflict of interest, and he can proceed with the evaluation.
I'll make a motion that we find that there are no conflicts of interest on this matter.
Here a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Next we're looking...
Abstaining.
Noted.
And one abstention. We're looking for the minutes of the January 21st, 2025 Planning Board Regular Meeting. Looking for a motion?
Peter, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for the January 21st Planning Board Meeting.
Okay, a second?
I had a question.
Yes.
I just had a question, but I think I know the answer. And that was the, let me see.
Anne, can you move your mic?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. At the end, the public hearing, we had, no, wait a minute. Well, this matter was brought up about an access road off of Skyview. Yeah, I take it that has nothing to do with this that came up, the concrete company?
Correct.
Okay, good. I just wanted to be sure.
Okay, so did we get a second on that?
You need a second.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Okay, we're moving on. We have no minor staff plan approvals, have no minor change approvals. So we'll go into our hearings and presentations. The first one is a public hearing. It's a site plan review for issuance of an annual renewable special permit for the fifth consecutive year for operation of the Story Brothers gravel pit located at 48 Goose Pond Road, as shown on tax assessor map R07, lot 48. And the applicant representative is Robert Story, the owner of RJT Properties. Jeff, did you have something you wanted to say on that?
Yes, just in full transparency, I work for Milton Cat. I'm one of 1,700 employees. Story Brothers is one of Milton Cat's customers. I don't have any direct business dealings with them. I feel I can vote objectively and fairly in the situation, but I just need to, in full transparency, share that with the board.
Thank you. What does the board's wish on this matter?
I don't see any conflict of interest.
Okay, then I'm looking for a motion to find no conflict of interest, and he can proceed with the evaluation.
I'll make a motion that we find that there are no conflicts of interest on this matter.
Here a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, kind of one of the things that we do, and you'll see it, that if there's even a perception of something, that we are required to let everybody know. So, Bridget, can you...
I'd like to, I also just want to state that I have Story Brothers currently working on a project for me, and I don't think, it's not on this project or on their pit, so I'd like to let you know that I have that currently going on today.
Anybody have any issues with that? Josh, can you make a motion?
I will make another motion that the planning board does not find that Rob has any conflicts of interest.
A second?
Second.
Seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor? Then we will proceed. Bridget?
Okay. So this is the fifth one-year permit for the extraction of earth materials at the site, so it's very similar to what we've seen in the past. Next year, we get to go to a five-year permit. And just in my regular dealings with the code enforcement officer, Mr. Longley, I have learned that there have been no complaints regarding the extraction of materials at the site in the last year, and everything seems to be operating in business as usual over there. And Rob is here, if he would like to step up and say a few words.
I'm Robert Story with Story Brothers Excavating. We're here for our annual permit renewal for our gravel pit on Goose Pond Road. We purchased the pit from the town of Cumberland in 2019. This is our fifth time coming here for the annual renewal, and as the planner has said, next year we'll be here for our five-year permit. And really, nothing has changed since we've owned the pit as far as the operations, or even prior to us owning the pit. The pit has historically been used as a gravel pit, and we have not changed anything with the operations over the years.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board?
Bridget, when you were doing these findings of fact, did they change at all from the last time we approved, last year's?
No.
Thank you.
Stacy, you had a question?
I have a question. In your, in your letter to Bridget Perry, it says, "It is the applicant's intention to expand the extraction operations to the current limits of the town ordinances." What does that mean exactly?
We are allowed to extract from a total of 7.9 acres of the 10-acre site. So eventually, we will use and work that, that full amount, that full 7.9 acres.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Yes, Anne?
I have one question. It's probably silly, but storage of materials, I'm sorry, storage of materials. It says, "The standard is satisfied because no materials will be stored on-site." Just so the gravel doesn't get stored there.
Is it the storage of hazard...
There are stockpiles of material there, but there are no pipes or anything within this lot.
Okay, so just gravel?
Yes.
Yeah, and we can say that then? Okay, okay.
Other questions from the board? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. Does anybody from the public wish to comment on this item? Hearing no one, I will close the public hearing and go back to the board. Hearing nothing, are we ready to go through the findings of fact? Josh?
I will make a motion that we waive the reading of the findings of fact.
Now, do we hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? So, we're...
I will make a motion that we approve the findings of fact as written.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? And finally?
I will make a motion that we approve site plan review for an issuance of an annual renewable special permit for the fifth consecutive year for operation of the Story Brothers gravel pit located at 48 Goose Pond Road, as shown on tax assessor map R07, lot 48. And the applicant representative is Robert Story, the owner of RJT Properties. Jeff, did you have something you wanted to say on that?
Yes, just in full transparency, I work for Milton Cat. I'm one of 1,700 employees. Story Brothers is one of Milton Cat's customers. I don't have any direct business dealings with them. I feel I can vote objectively and fairly in the situation, but I just need to, in full transparency, share that with the board.
Thank you. What does the board's wish on this matter?
I don't see any conflict of interest.
Okay, then I'm looking for a motion to find no conflict of interest, and he can proceed with the evaluation.
I'll make a motion that we find that there are no conflicts of interest on this matter.
Here a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, kind of one of the things that, that we do, and you'll see it, that if there's even a perception of something, that we are required to let everybody know. So, Bridget, can you...
I'd like to, I also just want to state that I have Story Brothers currently working on a project for me, and I don't think, it's not on this project or on their pit, so I'd like to let you know that I have that currently going on today.
Anybody have any issues with that? Josh, can you make a motion?
I will make another motion that the planning board does not find that Rob has any conflicts of interest.
A second?
Second.
Seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor? Then we will proceed. Bridget?
Okay. So this is the fifth one-year permit for the extraction of earth materials at the site, so it's very similar to what we've seen in the past. Next year, we get to go to a five-year permit. And just in my regular dealings with the code enforcement officer, Mr. Longley, I have learned that there have been no complaints regarding the extraction of materials at the site in the last year, and everything seems to be operating in business as usual over there. And Rob is here, if he would like to step up and say a few words.
I'm Robert Story with Story Brothers Excavating. We're here for our annual permit renewal for our gravel pit on Goose Pond Road. We purchased the pit from the town of Cumberland in 2019. This is our fifth time coming here for the annual renewal, and as the planner has said, next year we'll be here for our five-year permit. And really, nothing has changed since we've owned the pit as far as the operations, or even prior to us owning the pit. The pit has historically been used as a gravel pit, and we have not changed anything with the operations over the years.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board?
Bridget, when you were doing these findings of fact, did they change at all from the last time we approved, last year's?
No.
Thank you.
Stacy, you had a question?
I have a question. In your, in your letter to Bridget Perry, it says, "It is the applicant's intention to expand the extraction operations to the current limits of the town ordinances." What does that mean exactly?
We are allowed to extract from a total of 7.9 acres of the 10-acre site. So eventually, we will use and work that, that full amount, that full 7.9 acres.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Yes, Anne?
I have one question. It's probably silly, but storage of materials, I'm sorry, storage of materials. It says, "The standard is satisfied because no materials will be stored on-site." Just so the gravel doesn't get stored there?
Isn't the storage of hazard...
There are stockpiles of material there, but there are no pipes or anything within this lot.
Okay, so just gravel?
Yes.
Yeah, and, and we can say that then? Okay, okay.
Other questions from the board? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. Does anybody from the public wish to comment on this item? Hearing no one, I will close the public hearing and go back to the board. Hearing nothing, are we ready to go through the findings of fact? Josh?
I will make a motion that we waive the reading of the findings of fact.
Now, do we hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? So, we're...
I will make a motion that we approve the findings of fact as written.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? And finally?
I will make a motion that we approve site plan review for an issuance of an annual renewable special permit for the fifth consecutive year for the operation of the Story Brothers gravel pit located at 48 Goose Pond Road, as shown on tax assessor map R07, lot 48, subject to the limitation of approval and the standard condition of approval.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Okay, pick and choose on that. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Congratulations and welcome to another year. Moving on to item two, a public hearing. It's a site plan review for Lakeside Concrete Cutting to temporarily store clean concrete located off Skyview Drive, tax assessor map R01, lot 11-9. And the applicant is Ryan Peters of Lakeside Concrete. Bridget?
And I just put a memo from the code enforcement officers in front of you in Mr. Longley's, you know, going about town and doing inspections, and as we talked about last meeting, that there was the construction road on the Skyview Drive, that we've, you know, we've had so many things going on up there at that site. So Mr. Longley noticed that there was some concrete debris being stored, and then he inquired with the landowner, who said that they were going to lease some land to Lakeside Concrete and for temporary storage of inert materials in this small section of that, those two lots up there, I guess it's just the one lot. And so, we asked that Ryan come and present to the board and just talk through what his plans were. Also, in the memo from the code enforcement officer, he reached out to the DEP, and the DEP has no...
Okay. So this is the fifth one-year permit for the extraction of earth materials at the site. So it's very similar to what we've seen in the past. Next year, we get to go to a five-year permit. And just in my regular dealings with the code enforcement officer, Mr. Longley, I have learned that there have been no complaints regarding the extraction of materials at the site in the last year. And everything seems to be operating in business as usual over there. And Rob is here, if he would like to step up and say a few words.
I'm Robert Story with Story Brothers Excavating. We're here for our annual permit renewal for our gravel pit on Goose Pond Road. We purchased the pit from the town of Cumberland in two thousand nineteen. This is our fifth time coming here for the annual renewal. And as the planner has said, next year we'll be here for our five-year permit. And really, nothing has changed since we've owned the pit as far as the operations or even prior to us owning the pit. The pit has historically been used as a gravel pit and we have not changed anything with the, the operations over the years.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board?
Bridget, when you were doing these findings of fact, did they change at all from the last time we approved last year's?
No.
Thank you.
Stacy, you had a question?
I have a question. In your, in your letter to Bridget Perry, it says, "It is the applicant's intention to expand the extraction operations to the current limits of the town ordinances." What does that mean exactly?
We are allowed to extract from a total of seven point nine acres of the ten-acre site. So eventually, we will use and work that, that full amount, that full seven point nine acres.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Yes, Anne?
I have one question. It's probably silly, but storage of materials, I'm sorry. Storage of materials. It says, "The standard is satisfied because no materials will be stored on site." Just so the gravel doesn't get stored there.
Isn't the storage of hazardous?
There are stockpiles of material there, but there are no pipes or, or anything within this, this lot.
Okay, so just gravel?
Yes.
Yeah, and, and we can say that then. Okay, okay.
Other questions from the board? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. Does anybody from the public wish to comment on this item? Hearing no one, I will close the public hearing and go back to the board. Hearing nothing, are we ready to go through the findings of fact? Josh?
I will make a motion that we waive the reading of the findings of fact.
Now, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? So, we're...
I will make a motion that we approve the findings of fact as written.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? And finally?
I will make a motion that we approve site plan review for an issuance of an annual renewable special permit for the fifth consecutive year for the operation of the Story Brothers gravel pit located at forty-eight Goose Pond Road. As shown on tax assessor map R-07, lot forty-eight, subject to the limitation of approval and the standard condition of approval.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Okay, pick and choose on that. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Congratulations and welcome to another year. Moving on to item two, a public hearing, it's a site plan review for Lakeside Concrete Cutting to temporarily store clean concrete located off Skyview Drive, tax assessor map R-01, lot eleven-nine. And the applicant is Ryan Peters of Lakeside Concrete. Bridget?
And I just put a memo from the code enforcement officers in front of you. In the, in Mr. Longley's, you know, going about town and doing inspections and as we talked about last meeting, that there was the construction road on the Skyview Drive that we've, you know, we've had so many things going on up there at that site. So Mr. Longley noticed that there was some concrete debris being stored and then he inquired with the landowner, who said that they were going to lease some land to Lakeside Concrete and for temporary storage of inert materials in this small section of that, those, those two lots up there. I guess it's just the one lot. And so, we asked that Ryan come and present to the board and just talk through what his plans were. Also, in the memo from the code enforcement officer, he reached out to the DEP and the DEP has no, no problems with the temporary storage of materials there. And so, I will let Ryan give us his update on what's going on there and talk through the happenings and then we can go from there.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Ryan Peters. I'm the owner of Lakeside Concrete. We're an environmental remediation and demolition company located in Cumberland Foreside on Environmental Drive, which is adjacent to Skyview Drive. So, we are demoing a, about thirty thousand square feet of, of a school, of a school building at the Baxter School for the Deaf in, in Falmouth. And we're, that school is, you have to cross a causeway that has a twenty-two-ton weight rating on their bridge over the causeway. So, we were looking for a site close to the school. There isn't a lot of vacant land in Cumberland and Falmouth in the immediate area. So, we noticed there was development going on behind us on Skyview Drive. So I contacted Tim Hebert, as I saw his sign was up there. And we've done business in the past with Tim. And so, we, Tim helped, helped me facilitate a lease for the land there. I didn't realize the stormwater permit that Tim had was for Falmouth and not for Cumberland, so it didn't cover all of the lots, even though they're connected. So, there was a misunderstanding there amongst us. As far as stormwater goes for this, we, we don't really have any runoff to speak of. It's, uh, concrete, there isn't really any sediment, it's just the concrete solids. So we're, we're transferring the concrete at this property to save on fuel expense because the final destination's up in Richmond. So, we can haul a three-times larger load if we truck transfer from a small truck to a truck three-times larger at a local lot. So it's less fuel, also easier on the environment if we do a local truck transfer. And that way, we don't have to drive to Richmond so many times, basically. So, it's, uh, not a huge savings for us to lease land and have to handle the material twice, but it is a small amount of savings. So that's why we were trying to do it this way. Then we got hung up with the stormwater permit and going through this approval. So, this is kind of, uh, us trying to get this job done. So, we, I don't want to take up too much anybody's time, but I hope I explained it enough that, you know, that's what we're looking for. The, the site has, I think I was talking about stormwater there and then I kind of changed, changed my tune, but, so that, the site is elevated on three sides. So there's only one side that would really be downhill. And for any sediment to go through there, it's going to pass through quite a bit of grass. We can put a mulch berm up there, but, yeah, there's really no stormwater implications.
Okay, questions from the board at all?
How long are you going to need to store the material there, roughly?
So, we will haul in for two weeks, starting tomorrow. And then we'll haul out for another two weeks. So it'll be about four weeks from now.
Okay, so if we put a condition of approval, that it, this allowance waiver, whatever we're going to call this, expired in May, that wouldn't be an issue, just to put a, a stop time to it?
Yes, that's no problem. We, we actually leased the land for January and February and then we had this hang up. So, they are willing to change our lease till the end of March, but we have to be out by the end of March anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? So if the DEP signs off on it, then obviously there are no issues with hazardous materials or anything like that, so that seems to be. Anything else from the board? It just seems like Skyview Drive comes up every meeting. It's like Dracula, you know, that it just never dies.
Stay tuned for more.
So anyway, any, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to comment on this? Hearing no outcry, I will close the public hearing and go to the board. Do we, so I, I assume we need to go through the findings of facts on that. So Lorraine, will you do the honor?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, these are the approval standards and criteria. Utilization of the site, the planning board finds the standard is satisfied because no development is proposed and inert materials will be removed prior to the termination of the lease. Traffic circulation and parking, the planning board finds this standard is satisfied because no change is proposed for the existing site access, no roads or parking areas are being added. Stormwater management and erosion control, the planning board finds the standard is satisfied because a temporary erosion control berm will be installed. Water sewer and fire protection, the planning board finds the standard is satisfied because the site does not require water or sewer service. The access to the site is not proposed to change and will therefore not have an adverse effect on fire service to the site. Water protection, the planning board finds the site is not located within the town aquifer protection area. Flood plane management, the planning board finds the standard is satisfied because the site is not located within a flood plain according to FEMA MAP 23005-C0702F. Historic and archaeological resources, the planning board finds the standard is satisfied because there is no evidence of historic or archaeological resources on the site. Exterior lighting, the planning board finds this standard is not applicable because no exterior lighting is proposed. Buffering and landscaping, the planning board finds this standard is not applicable because no development is being proposed. Noise, the planning board finds this standard is satisfied because the use of the site as a temporary stor-, excuse me, as a temporary storage site will not result in adverse noise to surrounding properties above existing levels. Storage of materials, the planning board finds this standard is satisfied because no materials will be stored on the site. Capacity of the applicant, the planning board finds the applicant has technical and financial capacity because...
Oh, hey. Because he's... Because it's just, there's no real financial implications for the, there's no development proposed.
Right, there's no technical or financial...
Right, it's just the technical capacity is in the fact that they're a concrete cutting company and they have the materials. Sorry about that.
That's okay. So Christina, do you, you have that to fill in?
I, yeah.
Okay. And then the last is design and performance standards. None of the four design and performance standards are applicable.
Thank you, Lorraine.
You're welcome.
So looking for a motion to adopt the findings of fact as amended or as written?
I will make a motion that we adopt the findings of fact as amended.
Here a second?
Second.
Second, Stacy. Any, any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Now looking for a motion to...
Hold, Bridget, if, can we make a site plan expire? Because here's my issue is if we ever have another site plan that comes forward for this project, if this site plan is in place, then it's going to be an amendment to an existing site plan, which probably isn't that big a deal, but probably seems a little strange. I mean, can we just do a condition of approval that this site plan expires at the end of March? Or do we just need to say that the use needs to stop by the end of March? Yeah, I don't know.
I have a real, that's like, I mean, that's a really good question. I would say that the use as storage would need to stop, you know, the end of March or if we, you know, April, whatever the board pleases. And then I would expect whether we called it an amendment if further development was going to happen...
It's not that big a deal.
We would still run through the findings again, sort of as brand new.
Yeah. It would just be cleaner and more elegant if it never existed, but it's not a big deal.
I think we can probably talk to the attorney and see if we can make a way for it to have never existed. But for the cases of getting this one going tonight...
So for now, let's just add one condition of approval that the use for storage of materials...
Could, could we say the expiration of the lease? Because...
Sure, I like that, because then if he does need to extend it again, like, I'm fine.
Yeah, because I, I would imagine that we don't know what the weather's going to bring or whatnot.
They're going to want to end the lease as quickly as they, I like that idea better.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
So the use for storage of materials shall end with the expiration of the lease. Okay.
And then that way, I'm assuming Ryan would communicate Bridget to you if the lease were to be extended for unforeseen circumstances?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Longley and I are, have, you know, know what's going on, so.
Okay.
Okay, so how do you word that one?
We already did.
The condition is that the use for storage of materials shall end with the expiration of the lease agreement.
Okay, so we have got a motion, we've...
We don't have a motion yet. I will make a motion that we approve site plan review for Lakeside Concrete Cutting Incorporated to temporarily store clean concrete located off Skyview Drive, tax assessor map R-01, lot eleven-nine, subject to the limitation of approval, the standard condition of approval, and the one, in the one conditions of approval.
Here a second?
Second.
And do, have any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? And that's it, right? So...
Thank you.
You can start trucking. Okay, moving on to the third and final item. It's a public hearing for the amendment to an approved site plan for Main School Administrative District fifty-one for the addition of a new pre-kindergarten first grade school and associated improvements to be located off Tuttle Road, tax assessor map U-11, lots one, four, eight, nine, and Main Street at tax assessor map U-11 slash U-13, lot one slash one-twelve. The applicant owner is MSAD fifty-one and the representative is Pat Carroll of Carroll Associates Landscape Architects. A couple of things before Pat gives his presentation, just for clarification. The first thing is that this has been a approved project by the town of Cumberland, by the voters of SAD fifty-one, as backed, will be backed by, by bonds. So any discussions on whether it should have, should have been done or what parts of it should have been done are not germane to the authority of the planning board. Second is that the planning board, as much as maybe some of us was like to, has zero justification on what children ride the school buses. We have zero justification, zero authority over what students park where. And we have no authority over the, the schedule of what is built and when is built. We do have authority on parking, we have authority on noise, buffering, drainage, and probably fourteen others. So just to, when the public hearing starts, this is just some of the things that, that we're not going to pay any attention to and the time should be taken up by the serious issues of drainage, noise, and all the other ones. And that, being considered, Pat, it's your show.
What an introduction.
Well, sometimes you've got to make the trains run on the right track.
Right, so, my name is Pat Carroll, I'm a landscape architect. I've been working with the district for twenty years on all their different projects. Jeff Porter's here tonight. You know Jeff, he's the superintendent of schools. And I'm not sure anybody else from, Tony, Tony's here. Tony is Andy Johnson's partner at ARC and Andy's not able to be here tonight. He's, he gets the lucky, he's the lucky guy who gets to go to Bangor tonight for a meeting, so. Tony's here to answer any questions regarding stormwater utilities. That's, that's kind of their, their big kind of role in this, in this project, so. I know we went through a very detailed presentation the last time we met. It was back in, I think, December. And I talked to, I talked to Bridget and she indicated that we didn't really need to repeat that presentation tonight. So I think what I'm going to do is just update you on kind of things that have progressed since then. And then we can go over kind of any questions that you might have. I know there's a couple of letters that have come in. I'd like to be able to kind of address those and then answer any questions that the board may have, so. With that, again, this is the overall master plan. There are really five or six different components to this. The first being, and the one that really kind of created this project to begin with is, is the creation of a new pre-K through one school. And that's located in the, in the northeast corner of the, corner of the site. It forms the fourth quadrant of the, of the campus. And in order to accommodate that, that school there, there's been accommodations to both the site and other buildings in the, in the, on the campus. There's, and those, that also includes some additions and renovations at the Mabel Wilson School. There's a small addition right here, four classrooms that will accommodate that program. What's going to happen is that pre-K, K, and one are going to move to the new school. Mabel Wilson is going to become two, three, and four. Currently, four is in the middle school. So grade four is going to migrate back to, to Mabel Wilson. So that's going to become a two, three, four school. The middle school will become five, six, seven, eight, and then the high school will remain nine, ten, eleven, twelve. That's the way the grades will all function here. Whoops, I'm sorry. As you know, we were, we were here back in September, October, whenever it was, for a new maintenance building. That building is located in kind of the northwest quadrant of the site. That building has been out to bid now. I think they have bids and I believe on March sixth, the board will, will approve the bid for that, for that building. And that should kick off kind of an early construction of that building itself. The turf field is, is really, the whole idea is to replace the grass field, the grass game field with a turf field. Where we are on that right now is we have, we have issued a bid and received bids for just the turf only. We issued that bid to turf vendors. The district is actually buying the turf and the installation of that turf as a separate contract. And then there's, there'll be a separate contract for all the earthwork and, and site improvements and everything associated with bringing the grades up and the, putting the drainage in place for that. And that, those bids will probably go out in probably two weeks. So that's, that's the status on the, on the game field itself. There's associated with that, and we talked a little bit about this last time, and there's some, there's some arsenic soils that are in the topsoil layer of that field that have to be mitigated. We've been working with Hoffman engineers on that and we have a plan. I can show you detailed plans of that later, but I think they were included in the packet. Where the, the soil from this field and also a little bit of soil that we're reworking the road out here is going to be, we're going to excavate in here and bury, bury that soil underneath the... Um, where the, the soil from this field and also a little bit of soil that we're, we're reworking the road out here is going to be, we're gonna excavate in here and bury, bury that soil underneath the middle school field. And then, in, in addition to burying it there, we're gonna extend this, this earth berm across the end of it here. So that berm will also allow some buffering and screening to the neighborhood, and, and it allows kind of a full encapsulation of that soil on site. We looked at, uh, I must say, we looked at probably five or six different options for moving it offsite, and, um, most of them, in fact, we, we talked a couple times with the town about utilizing the existing landfill over here. Uh, we looked at utilizing the North Yarmouth landfill, we looked at utilizing the Bath landfill. Um, there's a, there's a company in Portland that agreed initially to take some of that soil, but kinda walked away from it. And so the only other option to move it offsite was to truck it to Norwich Walk, and it was gonna be close to a million dollars to have that, have that soil trucked offsite. So this is a very cost-effective way, it's a very, um, safe way of dealing with the soils on site. Encapsulation is really what happened when the, when the middle school went in and there were soils associated with that. Those were all encapsulated underneath the ball, baseball field that's out there now. So, um, it's, it's a, it's a known and approved method of dealing with these arsenic soils. We're going through a, what's called a V wrap or voluntary remediation action plan, uh, amendment, which is on the campus now. We're, we're amending that, uh, with DEP, and that is just about ready to be submitted to them, to them now. Other onsite improvements include kind of reworking of some of the circulation through here. Uh, we're reworking some major circulation at the, at Mabel Wilson, in that we're taking the bus loop and the buses from the east side of the, of the building and moving them over to the west side where the, um, or the north and south side, I guess, whatever, whatever it is. Um, to the opposite side of the building where the parent drop-off is now. This provides a, a safer, um, easier for parents to come in and stack, separates them from all the other circulation, and, and puts the students at the front door, which is kind of the, the important part of this. And then, and then the buses will come in here, so instead of currently, you know, cars end up stacking up all the, all the way out onto Tuttle Road to get into, to drop off here, they won't have to do that anymore. So there's some really good circulation improvements here. We're also reworking some parking lots, um, expanding a little bit of parking up here at the high school, and reorienting some parking in the back where the, uh, by the pool. Offsite improvements, um, I know we spent a lot of time talking about that at the sketch plan. We, we, after that meeting, we had, we had a very good meeting with a lot of the neighbors. Um, and we, we went out and walked Main Street in particular because there was some discussion about some widening that was proposed there. Um, everybody came away and, um, town manager was there, and we all came away feeling very confident that we could do this without any widening. So the new traffic impact study that was actually submitted to Main DOT today, and I, Bridget has a copy of it, it's on file with the town. Only, only requires or only requests two improvements. Two on Main Street, and they're really part of, they're part of a sidewalk improvements plan that was, that was approved by the town, I think, in two thousand twenty-three. And some of that work started and they didn't finish a lot of it because of budget concerns. These are, these are items that should have been done as part of that project that were, that were held off. So they include a little bit of working at this intersection here just to provide a kinda handicap ramp. Um, there's another down at Farwell, there's a, there's a pedestrian activated crossing there. They wanna, they wanna install a sign at that, at that location. And then on Tuttle Road, there's, there's a section of sidewalk between, I think it's Broadview and, and Meadowview that will be built. A new section of sidewalk, and then, um, removal of some, of a mid-block crosswalk further down that, that isn't gonna be required then. So it, it just, it, it, it provides better pedestrian connectivity along, along Tuttle Road, and it also provides better safety for crossings. And locates kind of the, the pedestrian crossings where they really need to be. So that's, that's kind of an overview of what, what the projects are. This is, this is kind of our master development plan. This is, it's, it's really beginning to kinda look more and more like a construction drawing, but, um, a couple of things that, that have popped up since we met in September, whenever, why, maybe it was November when we had the, uh,
December.
December, was it December?
Mm-hmm.
Seems like a long time ago. Um, is two things. One is that the school has come back and said, um, they need to install two additional portable classroom buildings for the middle school. And I know that, um, this is kinda something that every year seems to come up, that we need new, new portables. If you remember, last year when we put the portables in out here, we also, um, at that point in time, or maybe it was two years ago, at that point in time, were approved to put a, a twelve unit, replace these with a twelve unit classroom. Now, because this is all kind of in flux, uh, the idea is to just add the number of classrooms that are really needed, leave the existing classrooms there. This is only a temporary fix until, until the new school is open. So it's only for two years. But the idea is that we're gonna need to install these this summer. Bridget thought it needed to be on a site plan. So that's, that's kinda why it's shown here. The other is that the athletic director is looking with his boosters, there's, there's some funding available that they may be looking at renovating the fieldhouse. Once the maintenance building is, is constructed and operated, a lot of the equipment that's in kind of the right-hand side of this fieldhouse will, will be able to get moved out of there. And they can take that over and turn that into a really nice training room. And, um, they're looking at doing a small addition there, it might be as small as like six or eight hundred square feet. Hasn't been designed yet, but, um, I wanted to get this on the site plan so that you guys are aware of it, and perhaps when and if it ever comes to be, we don't have to go back through an amendment to the site plan to make that happen. So with that, um, I think most of the other modifications on here are pretty minor in, in detail. I did wanna bring up a couple of points regarding landscaping. Let me just jump here to the landscape plan. We had initially talked with, uh, Steve Perdue, who lives at, at this location right here, back in the summertime about, uh, he, he'd called and was concerned about, uh, visibility of the school, noise from the playground and so forth. All rightfully kinda justified comments being a, and a butter to a, to a primary school. Um, so we, we said, well, you know, we're really kinda pinched here. We, the, the building is kinda what the building is in order to fit on the site. Uh, we have some room on our side, we understand that, um, it's not, we don't have room to really kinda provide total screening of this building from your, from your house. But we can, we can help with some landscaping, and at the time, our understanding was that he offered to kinda do some plantings on his property too. So that's what we showed. Um, it, it was a misunderstanding that we didn't really get resolved at the end here, and, uh, he brought that up recently. I, I had a good conversation with him today. I think that, um, we're more than willing to work, still work with him on this, and I think that as a condition of approval, um, you know, there could be some kind of type of condition that says that final landscaping, um, in this area of the site needs to be kind of agreed to and confirmed with, with both the, the neighbor and the town before issuance of a building permit. Which I think is fitting with, um, with the other conditions of approval because Bridget has indicated that we need to provide final drawings back to the town, meeting all conditions before a building permit would be issued. So I, I think that's a, that's a very valid thing, we can, we can work on this over the next month or two, and I'm sure we can come to a solution that, that is beneficial to both of us. But as I mentioned to Steve, you know, part of the reason we planted, and there's, there's a series of ten trees on his property, mixture of evergreens and, and deciduous, it was really to benefit him. It's not, I think, you know, we still meet the intent of the ordinance as far as landscaping. We are providing landscaping, we're providing a fence, a solid fence along the property line, and, um, and there's a, there's a landscape zone that's about ten feet wide between the property line and where we need to provide a, a emergency access drive for the fire department. So we have some room on our side, but not enough room to really kinda do a very robust planting, and that's why we had, we had offered, or he had offered, initially we thought, and I, I was misunderstood on that, but, um, to plant some on his side, so. We'll work through that, um, that's, that's really not much of an issue. Um, we did have another, uh, concern from, um, if I can find here. From Lee and her neighborhood over here, as far as, um, as far as, right now, there's a chain link fence that runs down here and along here about to, to where the, uh, power pole is. And, um, it's very exposed to their, to their neighbors. So we kinda shifted the road around to provide a little bit wider space in there. I think we have about nine feet now of planting. And one of the things we did was, we've changed the circulation around. So it used to be, yeah, I'm sorry, it's, it's this right here, it's this right here. So it used to be that you come in off of Main Street, and this is, these were two-way, uh, drive aisles that access those parking lots. And as people come in and pull into here, of course, in the nighttime, their headlights are gonna be shining right directly into those units. So what we decided was because we're making all of this two-way, that we would just direct traffic up here and make these one-way out only. So we'll put some signage down here that says one-way, do not enter. And so anybody coming up in here would have to drive down through the parking lot and out, which is fine, and it, it eliminates all the, or maybe, maybe not all of it, but a high percentage of the, of the headlights shining into these properties. And then in addition to that, we are providing a fencing and planting similar to what we were showing over at the new school, um, in that area. And then in addition to that, in discussion with, I think there was a neighbor across the street here that complained about headlights shining into her windows from the parking lot. Uh, we're providing a landscape zone in here, uh, with plants that'll be about five feet high, which should block headlights in that direction. So we've done, we've done what we think is a, is an appropriate level of landscaping to try to buffer some of the neighbors. Um, again, additionally, we've, we've got some planting in the back of, of the, uh, school adjacent to the maintenance building. I know that was discussed when we went through with the, with the approval on the maintenance building, they have some, some plantings back there. Um, and, and overall, I think we've got a pretty robust planting plan for the, for this, um, for the project. We received a series of, uh, peer review comments from C V Mahar, Dan Diffen, I think Dan's here tonight. We've worked pretty hard to kinda resolve those and, and work towards kind of bringing those up to completion, and we submitted a, a memo back to Bridget last week. Um, we included, included comments to all of that, and also, uh, provided, I think they, they went out today, I think, this morning? Did you get those this morning? Set of site plans that,
Yeah.
Updated site plans
Yep, I send them directly to the board.
That reflect all of these changes in those. So those are just, those are kinda interim, you know, we still understand that we're gonna bring an entire set of plans back at the end that, that will, um, reflect all the changes and, and modifications. But we're, we're moving in a pretty good pace, um, towards, towards having a real project. And the idea is that, um, we've got, we've already submitted, I think, two rounds of comments back to DEP. We're on track with them as far as the site location permit goes. Uh, we anticipate we'll get that probably in late April, at which time we'll, we'll then award a bid for the field and begin, hopefully begin construction on the field. Um, the overall bid will probably go out in June, and the idea is to start, or maybe May, but, but the idea is to start construction this summer, once school is out on the, on the other larger piece of it. This is just a, a concept plan, or a grading plan showing, um, this is, this is the area where the soil will be encapsulated. We've had Hoffman Engineering do test pits in there to, to, to determine where the groundwater level is, which is deep enough. It's gonna be about eight feet deep, we're gonna dig, dig a big hole about eight feet deep, we're gonna push all this soil down into here, and then what soil we can't fit in there, we're gonna create a berm on this end, which I think, you know, the athletic director and, and others in the, at the district were actually pretty encouraged about that because they really liked the idea of people being able to sit on this berm and, and watch the games while they're, while they're in play. And it also does provide a bit more buffer and screening to the neighborhood behind it. So I think with that, we'll just kinda open it up to some questions. The only other thing I, I guess I should, I should touch on here is parking. We spent a lot of time last time talking about parking, and, um, and, um, so what we've done, we've kinda reworked the parking. We have a total now of, oops, I don't know how to get rid of that, but of eight hundred and seventy-one parking spaces on the site. And, um, I know the ordinance, if you go through the ordinance, there's a requirement of one for every three occupants in the school. I think it comes out to like a thousand and two hundred and fourteen or something like that.
Yeah, I've, I've done the math a couple times, I don't have those numbers, but yeah.
It's, it's a, it's a very large amount.
Thousand seventy, yeah.
And we really can't accommodate that on the site. I mean, it's just, it's just unpractical to do that. We've gone through and kinda, now we've got, we've got existing seven hundred and thirty-nine, proposed eight hundred and seventy-one. So there's about a hundred and forty car increase in parking on the site, and it's really distributed really throughout the site. The primary, primary focus was really to make sure that the staff and visitors and drop-off were adequately provided. Uh, the second component to that is student parking. And, um, one of the things we're doing, and the reason we expanded that parking lot by the high school, is really because when we come in and, and do the bus loop and, and take away some of that area outs, in front of the Performing Arts Center now, we're, we're, um, losing student parking spaces in that situation. And so we're really trying to maintain and, and increase to the extent we can the number of student parking, uh, spaces. So we've got, um, we've got a total here. Currently, there's, there's a hundred and ninety parking spaces for, dedicated to students, and in the proposed, we were up to two hundred and seven. So we've, we've maintained the existing number and we've added a small amount of additional parking for, for students. Where, what we've really also done is we, we realized that we really didn't have any component in here for event parking. And we know that that occurs all the time, there's athletic events, there's performances, there's open houses at the school and so forth. And so, um, with this, with this new parking arrangement, we've kinda dedicated about a hundred and eight spaces that are really kinda, what we would call them flex spaces, but they're really geared towards event, after-school use of parking, um, events and other public uses. So, um, I'll show you here in the, in the plan how that's distributed. So the purple here is, um, is all staff parking. So this is all staff parking here, there's staff parking here for, for the middle school, there's staff parking here, uh, for the high school, there's staff parking here for the administration building, and, um, staff parking here. There's staff parking here for the administration building, and, um, staff parking here, and some here for, for the new school. So, it's all very close to the school buildings. It's all dedicated, and I don't know how Jeff is going to do this yet, whether he's going to have signage. But, um, that's all dedicated staff parking. Then we have, um, s- student drop-off parking. And we have some student drop-off parking in front of the library here. We have some student drop-off parking in front of the P A C over here at the high school. We have some student parking, drop-off parking at the middle school here. Student parking at the new school is really, is really here. So, it's, it's a fairly small amount. I think there's like ten or eleven spaces, which is kind of all they felt like they needed. One reason why is because there's such a, a big stacking distance inside the parking lot here that they can come in and, and stack up if, if necessary, but ten or eleven spaces here. And then, at, at the middle school, we've got drop-off parking around the inside of the, the loop here. Then there's visitor parking, which is, which is located at the middle school here. At, at the, uh, Mabel Wilson is located out here. At, um, the new school is just located here. There's about five or six spaces. And at the high school, um, is located, doesn't really show, but there's, there's five spaces located here, kind of in this new lot. The yellow is, um, maintenance and, and service. There's maintenance parking here, service parking for the high school here, uh, there's service parking for the new school. Where is it here? It's, it's back, it's right here. The yellow doesn't really show up very well. For the Mabel Wilson, it's, it's currently where it is right now, adjacent to the cafeteria. And then, for the middle school, it's, it's located here. So, those are all pretty much existing spaces that are, that are going to remain. The student parking is, is located here. The primary student parking will be here. And then, there'll be some student parking. There's about seventy-five parking spaces here. And then, where the existing, um, detention basin is, we're going to put underground chambers in there for drainage, and we're going to park on top of that. So, that's student parking there and here. And that totals to about two hundred and seven spaces. Then, in addition to that, we do have, these are kind of flex spaces out here. Again, event parking. Um, there's forty-seven spaces, I think, associated there. So, we've, we've tried to distribute the parking in a way that kind of makes sense to where the uses are going to be, and tried to concentrate most of the parking for the students, or not for students, but for the staff and visitors and drop-off areas. And, um, you know, students kind of get what's left. So, that's kind of where it is, a hundred, eight hundred and seventy-one spaces. I know it's a couple of hundred or a hundred and fifty spaces less than what's required, but we just, without really jamming up this site with more parking, which I don't think anybody wants to do, um, that's kind of where we are. So, with that, I think I'll just turn it over to questions, and we can go through in detail anything you want.
So, Pat, what I think I'd like to do is, uh, a couple, two phases. One, kind of have Andy's replacement come up. There was a, a lot of discussion at the, uh, at the workshop on the drainage into, uh, the housing development, uh, down below the middle school, so that if we could kind of have an overview on that. And then, second, since some of it really was eventually going to involve the town, I'd kind of like to have Matt or his replacement come up and also let us know what the town has planned for that, uh, area down in the, down in the swamp. Because a lot of the, a lot of the workshop was really concerns, uh, on the neighborhood with that water, and it does involve the town. So, can we see the groundwater thing?
Yeah, well, uh, to be honest with you, that wasn't part of, um, anything that Bridget had said we should be talking about tonight. So, um, I don't have those slides with us. If, I could probably pull them up on a, somewhere else on my file, but...
Well, uh, let's see what comes up with the public.
Okay.
But I would like to have, uh, but groundwater was, uh, and drainage was an issue, and, uh, some of it was related to the town that the public had questions on. So, I think, let me get Matt up to just briefly, uh, because that's kind of collateral damage on your part.
Okay.
So, uh, Matt, if you could...
Tony, you didn't bring anything, did you?
Well, only eight and a half, I believe.
That's okay. Let's see where the public comes in on this, whether or not, because Andy was able to answer a lot of the questions. I think that defanged a lot of it, uh, before, but did left, leave hanging what, uh, that the town was going to try to do some stuff to mitigate.
Okay.
And it may make your life easier.
That's fair.
Matt?
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. How are you? Uh, happy to speak on that, uh, regarding the drainage. It's a concern that we did have for the town side. I know Chris Boldick, my Assistant Manager and Public Works Director, uh, we were out there this past fall and saw some, uh, then summer and saw some, you know, some drainage issues that were existing there. We are looking to go out to request for proposals next month, uh, to get this in our plan for work for the coming year, uh, to get in there and do some, some, you know, quite honestly, some overdue maintenance that needs to take place in there with some cleaning out of the, of the existing swale and getting that back on a functioning, uh, level, uh, so it can handle the stormwater. A lot of it's been, uh, due to growing, growing in, uh, and just multiple years of, so, I think it, you'd say siltification and sand and other things running off from the above site. Uh, so, we'll get in there and looking to clean that up and, uh, and, and do quite a bit of management of cutting and pulling that back and having that function, and then, uh, anticipate that that will improve the, the runoff as well as the, the ponding, quite honestly, that, that takes place with a lot of, uh, with high rain seasons. And, you know, last summer was kind of dry, but it had its wet moments, and, uh, we were there on a couple of them to see, and there was, uh, the work just needs to be done. So, we're looking to go out to that on this, like I said, next month, to go out to R F P, get back what that number looks like, and have that as our planned work going forward. Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd also like to jump in on, uh, conversation regarding Main Street and Tuttle Road.
Sure.
Uh, traffic improvements. Uh, we did, as Pat and Mr. Carroll said, uh, there was a really, a well-attended, uh, public, uh, listening session and, and walkthrough session that was held, oh, I think it was back in, was it? Yeah, it started January. Uh, it was a day much as today, very cold. Tough day to get a lot of people outside to walk down Main Street, uh, to take, to take a look at it. But, uh, excuse me, I'm just getting over cold. So, uh, seems like everybody has one of the other these days. And, um, it's the town's position that we do not want to see anything changing on Main Street and on Tuttle Road. Uh, it's our feeling that, and, and I think that Randy, uh, Dunton, who's done a lot of work from Gorlin Palmer, uh, has provided significant evidence showing that there is not a need to expand or widen Main Street. Uh, we are obviously motivated because we spent a lot of time and did a lot of work last summer on, uh, on Main Street installing new sidewalks and, uh, a lot of pedestrian and, and bicycle improvements that take place in there. So, it's, uh, and we feel that that, the conditions as they are now, uh, also support where they need to go in the future. Uh, we have, uh, I've provided two different letters in support of the project to, uh, Maine Department of Transportation, uh, in, in part of the whole project. Uh, they've got an expedited review that they've requested Maine D O T to do right now. Uh, just provided a second, uh, letter regarding that last week, and reiterated the town's position that we feel that, uh, it would, it would be detrimental to pedestrian and bicycle and all modes of, uh, traffic safety to expand that because it would increase, you know? It's our feeling that the wider you get, the more speed, uh, will increase. And, um, as well as there's some heritage trees and other elements that, quite honestly, back up the, 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 the town center appeal that, uh, that so many people have embraced and, and find is, uh, one of the hearts, uh, one of the heart of Cumberland elements. So, um, so we reiterated that, we reiterated that point, or I reiterated that point, uh, the royal we, uh, just this week or last week to get that through. So, um, but we, unanimously to a person, uh, that was the sentiment that was received that day as well. Probably could have saved some people a bit of time if we had got out and said that at the start of it, but it was important to hear what the public, uh, the public feelings and what their sentiment is as well, because many of them were residents of the area, and they know it better than most. And, uh, so their feeling was that if there might have been a, uh, a slight, um, delay of traffic going through, it was not of a substantial amount that it would be a major hindrance. So, uh, we agreed with them, and, uh, and we've, and I actually emboldened that in my letter, my most recent letter, to make sure that they understood the town's position. But, uh, so, we've tried to get both of those ideas, uh, or address them as, as quickly as we could, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. So, uh, we're happy to be of assistance going forward, but, uh, we've, we've tried to work with Mr. Carroll and Superintendent Porter on, and his team on this as well. So, we're happy to support, and, uh, any questions you have, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Thanks, Pat.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Serge, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So, um, the Maine Department of Transportation will provide the traffic movement, movement permit. And my understanding from when we met in December on this project was that, um, M Dot would make recommendations, but it was under the purview of the town whether to take those recommendations or not. Is that a true statement?
I, I think that's still accurate. Uh, Ms. Ri- Ms. Ryan.
And so, what I'm hearing tonight is the town is committed, um, to stay the course in terms of not making any changes to Main Street or Tuttle regardless of what, um, M Dot comes back.
That, that's where we are. As well as, you know, there's pedestrian improvements as well that Mr. Carroll laid out early with sidewalk expansion and, and tilt downs and reflecting, uh, areas that I think really addresses, uh, a lot of that as well, improved pedestrian safety. So, uh, we feel it's a complete package there, and, uh, you know, Maine D O T, you know, will take all that into consideration, but ultimately, you know, it's, it's, that's, that's where we want to be as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You'll be available just in case.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we can go to questions from the board. Anne?
Yeah, I, I have a few questions. I assume that you have involved our Cumberland Police Department and perhaps some other security, um, consultants with respect to the safety of the schoolchildren in the new building, uh, the things like, well, the parking areas for one thing, um, but also doors, windows, things like that.
Yeah, I can, I can answer for the architects, but I, I can say that, um, we have met with the police chief, we met with the fire chief, and, uh, they've reviewed the plans. We had, we had really good discussions with both of them about, about circulation and access and, and, um, and so forth throughout the site. And in fact, one of the changes we've made was in, in response to some comments that, uh, Chief Small had about, about turning movements coming into the school site for emergency access in the parking lots and then around the school and so forth. So, we've, we've adjusted turning radiuses, we've shown them templates and so forth, and we have met with, a couple of times with the police chief to kind of review, review that.
Okay. What about things like the entrance to the school? It's the safety of, uh, the security.
Well, the entrance to the school, and if I can pull that up here, um, yeah, you'll see a series of bollards here that are kind of in the front of the school. The school, this is, this is the only entrance to the school. There's, there's some secondary egress doors. All those will be locked from the outside, keyed in and so forth. But, the main entrance is here. I think it was, maybe it was, maybe it wasn't discussed at the sketch plan meeting, but, uh, there's really two, two levels of egress into the building.
Okay.
Um, and they, you have to get past kind of, uh, somebody at the front desk in order to, they have to buzz you in twice in order to, to access the school. So, so that's all safe. All the build, all the doors themselves are secured, and, and only, only access through key fobs from, you know, responsible staff. And then, and then in addition to that, you know, because this is accessible through here, we wanted to make sure that a car can't drive through the front door and kind of access the building. So, we've got a series of, of bollards in the front here that spaced out such that, you know, it's going to prevent a vehicle from, from traveling in there. Additionally, we have, you know, in the landscape plan, this is all low-growth landscaping in the front, so nobody can kind of hide in the bushes and, and, uh, jump out and obstruct some, uh, you know, jump and, and kidnap somebody. So, um, you know, it's all been thought about for sure.
Okay.
And, uh...
Okay. Okay. Now, um, another question I have is, there were some comments from the public about the period of construction, the concern about noise and debris and that type of stuff, but I, I assume that you're going to be following best practices, and we're not going to see a lot of dirt around on the roads and that kind of stuff.
No, there will be, and I, I'm not sure if, if Andy or Tony's plans show this yet, but they, they might. Construction entrances, but we don't have them yet, but there will be kind of a stabilized construction entrance. Now, a lot of the, initially, some of the construction traffic for the new school is going to come in off of Tuttle Road. There's, as you know, there's a, there's an easement through, uh, this is Mr. Purdue's site house right here. There's an easement that, that the school owns through here, and there's a, there's an emergency access road that's in there now. There's an access drive. And so, some construction will start in that direction. The other construction is going to come in off of, off of Main Street here. And, you know, once we get this new road kind of built, which is really part of the initial phase of work this coming summer, is to get that circulation in place, then all of this area in the front here can get utilized for construction staging. So, all, then all the access, this will come in, this will be totally fenced off here. Even in the back, this will all be fenced off, um, and, and gated and restricted during construction. So, there will be noise. I mean, there's no doubt, you can't build a school without noise. But, um, hopefully, you know, once, once things get, get kind of cleared out and, and graded off and, and underway, then, um, the noise will kind of abate a bit. But, uh, the idea on, on this easement through here is ultimately, it'll just revert back to an emergency access easement. We're not anticipating any kind of public access through there. We're not, we're not doing any parking, we're not doing any pedestrian sidewalk that connects to the back of the school. Uh, that will just be emergencies only. And, uh, we did talk with the fire chief about that. We thought maybe he wanted a paved fire lane all the way out to Tuttle Road, and he said no, because that's just going to encourage other people to kind of use that. So, um, that's what we're going to do. We're going to use this. It's, it's in pretty good shape now. Will probably be upgraded a little bit to handle construction traffic, but once it's all done, it'll be regraded and restored back to, back to what it needs to be.
Okay. Um, and finally, could you, um, show us a, the picture of the school building, the, the elevations, and kind of describe what it's going to look like? I was having a really hard time understanding that from what was in the packet.
Yeah, I'm not, to be honest with you, I'm not sure I...
And I looked at the school website too, and was having some trouble.
I included the architectials with this, but this is a, this is a perspective of the school.
Okay.
So, this is the main entrance right here. This is the bus loop that comes around. This is the parent drop-off area here. This is the gym. So, the gym, and there's an upper classroom wing here that are, so there's a portion of this building that's two-story.
Okay.
That's the gym portion, and then there's a, there's a series of classrooms on the kind of east wing of the building.
Okay, and that's the original building then? The, the, I, it seemed to me you were talking about expansion, but that's not...
This is the original building. The expansion would be off the back at the second-story level. And I can show you, well, let's, let's get through this first. So, this is the gym. There will be a covered kind of canopy area or porch off the end of the gym that's adjacent to the student drop-off area. So, students will be able to wait undercover while they're waiting to get picked up or dropped off in the mornings or the afternoons. Um, this is... This is staff parking here. What happens is there's a driveway here, parents coming in to drop off will drive through this driveway and around to the back of the school and then, then line up, I think there's 10 or 12 parking spaces that line up along the face of, the gym face of the building, and that's where they drop off. It's a direct shot either into the gym here, if somebody's standing there, if a staff is standing there allowing people to come in, or there's a straight walk down to the front entrance here. So that's, that's pretty much it on, on the face of the building. The lower part of the building will be brick, the upper part of the building will probably be some type of metal or some other kind of siding, but it won't, probably won't be brick, it'll be a lighter material than that. There is a skylight that's going to be kind of a focal point of, of the building, it's kind of, if you remember going through the floor plans, maybe we didn't go through the floor plans last time, but there's a, there's a media room in the, in the building with a large skylight that comes down into it, and kind of that's what, that's what this is here. It's, it's really been designed to be at the scale of a very small child, so that's kind of why most of it's all one-story, and, and the focus is really kind of at that ground level.
All set, Anne?
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions? Josh?
Good evening. In regards, let's start with waivers. You've got three right now. I believe we did the parking waiver the last time they were here.
Uh, no.
We wouldn't have taken any action.
Yeah.
Oh, we didn't?
We talked about the parking.
Okay, we talked about, okay. So we're going to need three, and based on your comments to Anne, my guess is you don't have any sort of details in regards to either the flat roof or the metal siding. Is there going to be a mansard or anything along the flat roof to kind of hide? I'm assuming there's going to be mechanicals up there?
There will be mechanicals in, in the back, yes.
So is there going to be anything kind of at the edge of the roof?
I think there's going to be screening that, that, that kind of, it's not a full mansard, but it'll be screening around the mechanical areas.
So the story, the, how would you classify the arsenic soils? Are they special waste or they?
You know, it's, it's kind of funny, they're, the arsenic soils are really kind of a, an inert, the arsenic is kind of an inert compound in the soil. It doesn't leach, it's just there, it never goes away. And it's not like a highly kind of restrictive, toxic soil. I think typically what happens is, you know, the danger is that some kid's going to sit out there and eat spoonfuls of it, and if he ate enough, he might, he might get sick, but the soil is on the site now.
Correct. I mean, so, I mean, I do think that it's important, the soil's already there, we're not adding anything, it is certainly the intent that the encapsulation makes it even more.
So with the encapsulation, what you do is, what we're going to do is dig a hole, we're going to move all that soil, it's going to be tested on-site to make sure that it's, that it is something that needs to be kind of encapsulated. It'll be moved into this, this area, and then there'll be a marker layer placed over the top of it, which is typically kind of a, like a geofabric of some sort, it might be like an orange snow fence or something, so that if somebody's digging out there and they dig down deep enough, they're going to, they're going to know they're going to hit that before they hit the soil. And then on top of that, there's a minimum of 12 inches of good clean loam that has to go on top of that, and then, and then it's vegetated.
Okay.
And that's really what happened on the, on the middle school baseball field. There's actually, I think, one or two of these little courtyards in here at the high school that, where that, that occurred, they kind of, they kind of buried some of that soil in there, and, and there was a berm out in front. If you've driven in the main drive and, you know, you have to go around this big berm to get around to where the Performing Arts Center is, that berm contains about 800 yards of, of arsenic soils that will be relocated back to this area as part of that.
Okay, thank you. In the phasing, it looks like you're going to start the new, construction of the new school, pre-K through first grade, in June of '25, and expected completion is August of '27.
That's hopeful, yeah.
Roughly. So Bridget, what is it, the standard condition or the limitation only allows for 12 months? I mean, even if we phase it, it only allows for 12, 12 months plus two six-month extensions. So can we change that?
Substantially commenced, I mean, it will be substantially commenced.
Yeah, but then you got to keep reading, because it also says, there is no other timeframe, and it also says it has to be substantially completed in the same period of time with two six-month extensions. So can we just change that to like 30 months?
I don't know.
Is that from approval or building permit?
It doesn't matter, because even though they're phasing it, we can usually get away, we can usually get around this by phasing it, so we don't start the clock ticking until they start it, but in this case, even if we do that, it's going to take more than two years.
Yeah, two years could be kind of tight. I mean, it's not going to take much longer than two years.
Right. I mean, I don't have a problem with taking more than two years, I get it, but we, I don't want to give you an approval that you're going to, and, and we theoretically can't do more than two six-month extensions, so I don't know where we would end up there.
But that's substantial completion.
So if the planning board finds our?
Substantially commenced, it's got to be completed.
And substantially completed.
Okay.
It says and substantially completed within the specified period, so that gives them a little wiggle room perhaps at the end.
If we have to, sure. I'd rather just give them 30 months and two six-month extensions.
So section 229-4 waivers and modifications gives the planning board, I mean, you're allowed to modify our waive standards to this ordinance, so we probably could modify that.
So do you want to do, treat it like a waiver? And then, and then another?
That's how I would treat it, yep.
So we could, I mean, I don't, can we, what, I've never done a modification. We could waive the limitation of approval and then make a condition of approval similar to the limitation of approval, except that it's within 30 months, we could say must be substantially commenced within 12 months of the date upon which the approval was granted, and substantially completed within 30 months from the date approval was granted, or we could just do two years and then do two six-month. I mean, I'm just throwing numbers out, I mean, we can discuss this more fully, but we're definitely going to have a problem if we leave 12 months and two six-month extensions in there. So you can think about it as I keep asking, well, except I'm going to ask you another couple of questions.
Okay.
We, it kind of goes back and forth, I believe we do have the main historical preservation commission letter saying we're all set?
Yes.
Okay, and then, the only major piece of new construction or substantial construction that's in the TCD is the new school, correct?
That's correct.
So the Maybelline Wilson, the new field and the maintenance building, that is all in the MDR.
That's correct.
And it is your understanding that in a use that spans multiple zones, it's the uses, in other words, the, the new school is going to be subject to the TCD standards and the rest will be subject to the MDR standards.
That's my understanding.
Thank you.
Anything else, Josh?
Nope, I'm done.
So how do we sort out this two-year thing?
I mean, without officially going to the attorney, I can only fall back on the provision that allows the planning board to waive, to provide waivers to any standard in this ordinance.
So would we deal with that when the two years are up, or do we deal with it, as, as Josh says, with a, a condition of approval?
I think either would be appropriate. I think I would go with waiving the limitation of approval and then putting in a condition of approval.
I was just, you know what, I, how about this, we waive the substantially completed portion of the limitation of approval, leave the rest of it in there, including the ability to give two six months, and we say that, that rather than a 12 month, and then do a proposed condition of approval that states the, the project shall be substantially completed within 24 months of approval, plus the ability for two six months?
It's going to be, it could be six months between now.
Oh, that's true, because it is, yep, it isn't.
Could be 24 months from the beginning, from the issuance of a building permit would be appropriate, or from the?
So if we did 30 months plus two six-month approvals, that should?
That should do it.
Sure.
Okay. I did forget, sorry.
Does the town manager have any experience in that, and that's okay with you?
Okay, yep. The VRAP permit, do you have, do you need a modification to the VRAP permit?
Yes, and we're, we're very close to filing that with Main DOT.
Okay, so that's going to need to be a condition of approval. I don't think we have that.
Can you say that again?
The MDEVRAP permit.
Oh, okay.
Modification.
Got it, mhm.
And then Bridget, down on architectural design and the findings of fact, you have two things, building style with the approved waiver, which I believe is going to be in regards to our discussion about the metal siding on the second floor and the flat roof, but then you have 2.2 larger structures with the approved waiver. I don't know of, I don't believe they're asking for a waiver from, it's on page five of the packet.
Yep, I'm with you. Larger structures aren't allowed to have flat roofs, so they, the waiver still needs to apply.
Larger structures are allowed to have flat roofs?
Or not.
Okay, but, but if we do, if we discuss indoor approve, a waiver for a flat roof and a waiver for the metal siding, that meets what you were trying to, what you were saying here under architectural design?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I think I'm done now.
Okay, so between now and when we're moving down here, we need to kind of finalize this 24, 30-month thing so that, you know, it's clean enough. I know we're taking a little bit of time on this, but in, in 12 years, two years and one month, when the time bomb goes off, and heaven knows who's going to be sitting on the school board or the town council or anything that could roll marbles under your feet, so better to take the time and clean this thing up now rather than a different time. So other questions from the board?
Yeah, I've got a question.
Okay, then Stacy.
So I wasn't on the board in December when you did your big presentation, so we're missing some of the information that you presented to the full board, and I, actually, it was one of the few recent presentations I haven't attended, but I had a couple of questions. One is, I know parking is a big issue, you guys talk about it a lot, have you guys looked at what the, when the maximum amount of spaces are used and how that happens and when it happens, or have you looked at that? I know that you're trying to just decide, hey, we need this amount of spaces and that's it, and it seems to me that, you know, a parking, internal parking study, which probably doesn't happen very often, have you done anything like that?
Well, as part of the traffic impact study, I think, and Bridget has that on file with the town, our traffic engineers, who are Cole Palmer, have done quite a bit of internal and external traffic studies on the campus. So they've, they've done parking counts and, and understand kind of distribution of parking on the?
I guess my question's in regards to maximum, you know, it seemed like to me you mentioned event parking, you mentioned, is, you know, schools nine to five or seven to five or seven to four during the week during the, you know, school year, is that when it's maximum uses, or is it some event when they have, you know, for, you know?
Typically, the events are, typically, events are after school hours, but there are, there are sometimes, some events that occur during school hours. Not many, but there are, there are daytime programs at, at each of the schools where parents will come and, you know, it's, then the parking lots are already full from, from students and staff parking, so typically, you know, on a weekend, and, you know, Jeff can chime in if he wants, but parking is an issue on this campus now, and it's only going to get worse with the addition of a new school, even though, you know, the number of students isn't really changing a whole lot, the number of staff is changing some. What we've done, and I can go through this in more detail here, so what we've done, we went through and, and really, we've based this on what we think is, the need is. So we've got, we've got staff, number of staff needs at each of the schools, number of visitor needs at each of the schools, number of drop-off spaces at each of the schools.
I guess I get it, I know all the, I've read that and know the math, I'm just asking if you guys, you know, really, it's about the maximum use of parking when you have the most people there, that's really what, whether you need, you don't need all 800 and something spaces all the time, it's when you need it. And obviously, it wants to be close to whatever the staff needs to park near their building, but, you know, I just, to me, it seems like you could explain, hey, we don't need all these spaces if you knew when your maximum use was and how much was being used at that point in time.
Well, I can tell you that during, during the school day, that we're probably pretty close to that 870 number on a, on a typical day. You know, that, but that, that does include visitor parking and drop-off, which typically are not really utilized full-time during the day. Drop-off people are in and out with, well, at the new school, they'll probably park and walk their child in, but at most of the schools, they pull up and drop off their, their kids and take off. Visitors might be there for a half an hour, they might be there for an hour, that's, that's come and go. Students, you know, it's, it's kind of an interesting thing, there's, really has kind of an open campus concept, so a lot of juniors and seniors have, have open hours, so they come and go all during the day. And some kids are going to, what is it, the?
Food Stop.
Food Stop. They're driving to the food stop.
So, thanks. On my next question, and I know that we asked some questions, but can you, you're, you're talking about VRAP, you're talking about, and I heard something about snow fence, and, you know, I think we're in the process of, you know, it's a pretty large project, and getting back to, I don't know if it was presented or it needs to be presented, you know, last time, because I, like I said, I wasn't here, you know, what that, it, it doesn't seem like I understood the question of how it's going to be, if it's not a concern about leaching, I guess, so you're not encapsulating it entirely like a lot of, you know, I've been involved in a lot of construction projects, and, and it seems like to me that most of it's done with a pretty severe amount of drainage, a lot of rock, a lot of geotextile, a lot of, and I don't know what the cover is, and I don't know, I didn't get a good feeling about exactly what you're constructing, because I'm assuming you want that to stay there for the next 50 to 75 years, I would guess, and?
I think, I think it'll stay on-site forever is the intent.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
But, but typically, you know, and this is the way the VRAP has worked on the, on this site for 20 years, is that that soil is, is sorted out, it's placed, and then a, a marker layer is placed over the top of that, and 12 inches minimum of loam and 12 inches minimum of loam is placed over the top of that. So, it's, it's not in direct contact with, with people. And that's really all it needs to do. I mean, the state, state has to sign off on it. They signed off on it initially, they're gonna sign off on this ultimately when it's done, and we'll meet whatever requirements or standards they have.
Yeah, I didn't hear the 12-inch overburden, I didn't, or, when you were talking before, I didn't hear you mention that.
I'm sorry, that, yeah, there's 12 inches.
I knew you were gonna have something, I didn't know what it was, and that was kind of my question.
12 inches of clean loam over the top, and then it's vegetated. So, and to be honest with you, the existing middle school field has the same arsenic soils on it that the game field does now. And we're not really, other than out here where the portables are, we're gonna restore that, and back in here, but there was some discussion initially about trying to encapsulate that, and that was actually before we went to the burial route. We were actually gonna spread that soil out over the entire middle school field and then encapsulate that. It would've raised up the middle school field by about three feet. And, and the cost of that was, was really pretty prohibitive, too. So, this is, this is really a cost-effective way to deal with it. The DEP is fine with the middle school being as it is, the middle school field, as long as, you know, there's vegetation on it. These, the whole campus is inspected at least once a year by the environmental engineer, Hoffman Engineering, that did the original VRAP. They have to do an inspection report and submit that to the DEP every year. And I believe that, maybe it's just with the stormwater this year, that as part of the DEP approval, we're gonna require that the stormwater reports or inspections are done every year and also submitted to the town in addition to the DEP. So that, so that you have copies of that.
Last question I had was in regards to the neighbor, Purdue. It seemed like to me, and I've done a lot of development personally, that the first thing you do is go see the neighbors and say, hey, what do we need to do to make sure that we're not gonna have an issue, you know, as I'm going along? And it seems to me that, I don't know what, you said you met with him today, I guess, and what his issue is in regards to whether it's noise, or light, or everything. And, you know, I think leaving that as a condition of approval or building permit kind of puts him in a tough spot, because it sounded like you guys want to get moving, and I'm just jumping in, you know, halfway through this process. But it seemed like that would've been a very significant thing to settle long before today.
Yeah, I agree.
And I don't know if he wants a sound fence, if he's, I mean, there's, it seemed like a pretty large project to have that be an issue at this point. And I don't know, you know, what you guys have accomplished today, or what you think you need to accomplish.
No, I agree, and I, you know, I did apologize to Mr. Purdue. I somehow or other got lost in the shuffle. We did meet with him, probably back in June, July, something like that. We, we had what we thought was a good discussion. I did try to contact him at one point in time, and we both discussed today the fact I had some computer issues where there was a virus that was going around, and it was around that same time. And I think that somehow or other, the communication just didn't get through. And so, we, we never really kind of finalized anything, but at the, at the initial meeting, and the architect, who's not here, was there with me. But our understanding was that he was okay with planting on his side of the fence, because he understood that we didn't have much room on our side to screen it. So, in addition to that planting, there is a fence. There's a solid fence that's, that's proposed all the way along his property line here, so. And again, we'll work with him, and that's, that's fine. We're, we've worked with everybody else here, and we're more than willing to be good neighbors to everybody to try to minimize or mitigate any impacts.
Thanks, Bud. And may it found a way out of the wilderness on this timing issue.
Yeah, did you take a look at section 229-11, expiration of approval? It says, "Construction of the improvements covered by any site plan approval must be substantially commenced within 12 months of the date on which the approval was granted. If construction has not been substantially commenced within 12 months of the date upon which approval was granted," okay, "the approval shall be null and void. If construction has not been substantially completed within 24 months of the date upon which approval was granted or within a time period as specified by the planning board." The, so we can, we can do another time period?
Yup.
The 30 months or whatever. It also says that they can, the applicant may request an extension of the deadline. And it mentions, "The planning board may grant up to two one-year extensions to the period."
Okay, yup.
So, Josh, you're our other witty's box top lawyer, we've got one lawyer.
I think we just need to make sure that the limitation of approval in what we approve reflects that language as opposed to the language. And we just, I think we can just, you know, maybe read that into the record and replace the limitation of approval, read it into the record as the replacement to the limitation of approval, and then just approve it, that, subject to that limitation of approval.
You lost me on the third turn, but it sounds good. Thank you, man.
Sorry, and where was that, 229?
229-11.
That's why you always have a one lawyer, but no more than one on the planning board. So, any more questions on this side?
I have one, Peter.
Yes.
Pat, earlier today, I read through the stormwater packet, and on page 147, it talks about pervious surfaces, and looks like it gets into the care of them. One of the things that, you know, especially being wintertime, if it's July, I probably wouldn't ask this question, but it says, "Limit salt for de-icing." What's, I mean, how much square footage is that we're talking about for?
This is for the porous pavers?
Yeah.
You know, I'm gonna let Tony talk about that, because he came all the way here and he hasn't said anything.
Hi, Tony Pantioco with Atlantic Resource Consultants. Let me just, oh, in this plan here, the area of pervious pavers is this right here?
Yup.
And that right there. So, essentially, that's the only place on the campus that we're using that. We're using that. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, you're right, we have these right here, at the entrance.
So, is this a cement-based paver, is that, is that why the salt should be limited, or?
Well, it's, it's more a limitation, because the pervious pavers have gaps wide enough to let the drainage get down through. So, you're trying to want to limit the salt that's gonna dissolve and get down into the, into the underdrain, and then off to the ponds. You know, it's kind of, it's similar to, you know, I guess, the same concerns we have everywhere about over-salting roads and parking lots and whatnot. But you want to try to keep it limited. The other thing is, it's open gaps, when the sun gets on it, it should drain down through, because you've got a sand layer underneath it, and then stone in the underdrain. So, you shouldn't really have icing on the top of it.
Okay.
You know, you may, if you get a big storm like we had, and it turns to sleet and all that good stuff, eventually, you know, when the plowing, but, yeah, it's just a matter, it's minimal salt in those areas to the best of your ability.
Good. Looks like a pretty small area, so not really concerned.
All set?
Yeah.
Stacy, do you have anything?
I'm fine, thank you.
A couple of things, the parking by the cemetery. Do you have curbing there? Are they going to be running up against a curb when they're parking there?
You know, this, this discussion has come up, I think, every time we've met.
Well, and for good reason, because we have the cemetery.
Yes, there is, there is curbing, there is curbing here.
Yup.
There's, in fact, all the, all the parking is all, everywhere is curved.
Okay.
So, there's curbing. If you, you know, as we, as we discussed when we went before the council, there's a 10-foot, there's a 10-foot, let me see, I don't know if I can zoom in on this or not. So, this is, this is new curbing that wraps around here, wraps all the way down along here. This striped zone here is that 10-foot kind of no disturbance zone. So, within that, there's a, there's a minimum of 15 feet here between the parking lot, curbing, and the property line.
Okay.
So, there's 10 feet of no disturbance, there's five feet minimum of landscape, of which, you know, there's, there's some trees and shrubs, and which we think will kind of, I mean, these are, these are evergreen trees, this is a deciduous tree, like this is a maple.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure that we had curbing so that we didn't have a situation where people were, you know,
Right.
driving into the cemetery, and there was...
No, I don't think that'll happen. You know, we have shown two, and it's not called out here, but there's a series of boulders that we've placed kind of in the landscape.
Oh, great, okay.
That are back at, kind of right at the no disturbance zone.
Yes.
They'll just be kind of low.
Okay, well, that's, that's excellent.
And they're, they're in between kind of where the trees are. The thought being that either the trees or the rocks will kind of stop somebody. I doubt anybody's gonna go up over that curb to begin with, but...
But I was pleased also to see that you changed the traffic pattern on Wilson with Tuttle, because I'm one of the ones, I run in the morning, and I come out by the superintendent's building, and you're right, you have parents that are dropping their little kitties off, and the traffic is backed up in both directions. So, I think by doing that with the buses, that, that, that's really a good move, because it's a serious problem right now. The other thing, I was also pleased to see that you made the changes in the lighting, because I think the neighbors had some legitimate questions and concerns. Also, was, was pleased to see that you're putting in, as a condition of approval, this noise issue from the, from the, from the game field, and a policy that needs to be done. And also pleased that the town is gonna have some enforcement issue on it, because right now, it's the Wild West, and, you know, we need to bring some law and order to that. So, thank you for getting...
So, I think, I think with that regard, we didn't talk about conditions of approval, but with that...
It is a condition of approval that's going in, is that a noise, that a noise policy be developed for the game field.
Right.
That is...
So, I wanted to talk about the overall use policy that the district is in the process of developing right now.
Right, but part of that is noise.
Part of that is noise. Part of it is who gets to use it.
Right.
What hours it gets to use, be used, what hours the lights are on, lights are off. I mean, it's a full, pretty comprehensive policy.
Right.
I think will be protective for the district, and any, any users that come and kind of want to, want to use the field, they'll, they'll know what the regulations and standards are, and it'll also protect the neighbors.
But we're also codifying it for the first time, so that there's, there's somewhat of a leash on there that's not there at this point.
Right, and I think that's why we, we had requested that that condition be in place prior to occupancy of the field, because we want to involve the town, we want to involve the neighbors, we want to make sure it's done right, and it's gonna take a little bit of time to do that.
But very appreciative on that. And also, there appears to be a very, very good multi-thing inspection system for the, for the drainage system.
Yes.
So that, you know, we're not gonna see some of the issues that we've seen in the past. Now, the only other thing, as you saw, my hackles go up when I saw the two portable classrooms that were going to be remaining. And I've been in this racket too long, having been three different times on the school board, is knowing that when something is there, it's very, very difficult and is very, very alluring to have them. So, I would like some kind of a condition of approval that either before an occupancy permit is granted, or some other type of thing, that an enforceable plan is put in place, that those things go. I mean, I've just been around too long to know that there's a 50% possibility that there's a, that space fills. It's the SAD 51 rule, if there's space, it gets filled. So, I know it seems petty, but I've, I've just been around too long, so if we can put some kind of a condition in there that they, in fact, do get removed. Other than that, you know, the, the work you folks have done as far as listening to the public comments and all that thing are good. So, if there are no other questions from the board right now, I'm gonna open it up to the public and have the public comment. Yes, ma'am? Just state your address, name and address, please.
Yes, first of all, can you all hear me if I talk through this mask?
I just pulled the, there, very good, thank you.
Is that okay? My name is Lee Buffington. I'm in a butter of the school, in the condos up by the high school there. And I'm speaking to this plan. I previously expressed to the planning board my numerous environmental and financial concerns about the school district's proposal to dig up green space and expand student parking to accommodate every high school driver, seniors, juniors, and sophomores with access to a car, regardless of how close they live to the school, allowing nearly empty school buses to be even more underutilized. That being said, my neighbors and I appreciate the school district's proposed measures to create a landscaped buffer to partially screen the larger student parking area and increase traffic, as well as the improved exterior lighting plan that will reduce the bright glare shining into our homes, as well as the current, the proposed circulation improvements. So, very good job on that, thank you. However, since landscaping typically happens at the very end of a project, what happens if the school construction project runs out of money beforehand? Could this site plan be changed and buffers and other site improvements reduced or eliminated? What power does the planning board have to enforce the existing approved site plan and ensure that landscape buffers and other items are properly maintained by the school district? As a supporter of the school building construction part of the project, I have grave concerns about the potential for severe cost overruns that could jeopardize the entire project. We are in a time of extreme budget uncertainty, with large tariffs being proposed, labor shortages on the rise, and funding challenges happening almost daily. Already, estimates for this school project have increased, and correspondingly, the bid contingency has been reduced. It remains to be seen if bids will match or potentially exceed the estimates. Change orders and other unknowns could bump up costs even more. Yet, in spite of this budget uncertainty, the school district is planning to construct a new controversial $3 million artificial turf field, first this spring, before even starting construction on the essential school buildings. There are legitimate concern, concerns about the safety of an artificial surface on children and the environment. There are already increasing incidents of excessive deafening volume and sometimes grossly inappropriate music being blared from the field's PA system at school and rec department functions at the field. Would attendees and neighbors have to endure the ear-splitting volume at even more events on the artificial turf field? Why not spend a fraction of that $3 million and make some drainage improvements to the existing natural field that has served us for decades? Why, in this time of extreme budget uncertainty, is this non-essential artificial turf field being put ahead of essential educational needs and the rest of this project, including necessary site improvements? Excuse me, I've got a little cold. Thank you for addressing these matters, in particular, those questions and comments that are in the planning board's purview. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you, Lee. Anybody else from the public? Yes, sir.
Good evening, hi, I'm Glenn Morzini, I live on Meadow Lane, in what you're calling the swamp, and you all gave me a license to build there thirty years ago, so it's turned out pretty nice all in all. I want to put emphasis on adverse noise and surrounding neighbors. Brief history, I know we're all tired tonight, about five years ago, the, the PA system, they got a new one and they flipped the speakers, and according to the athletic director, they were pointed at our house, our neighborhood. We've endured a lot over the last five years. I've seen telehealth interrupted, there's been complaints that religious services online were interrupted, there's been people who've come back from funerals and couldn't pray in grief without hearing a play-by-play blown into their house. When this was brought up, and this goes forward, talk to us who live there, come down and listen to it. It only happened once, and that happened after a certain board mentor, member intervened in the process. We had the athletic director come down, hold his cellphone, I have another neighbor with me who bear witness, call the tower, this is what the games are going to sound like. Within two weeks, it went back to what it was. It was not a function of the wind or weather. We spent months trying to get a response back. So if you're going to change and address the adverse noise, involve the people in the neighborhood. The speakers were flipped last fall, no one talked to us. No one said, "How's the sound now?" I got news for you, it was worse. And as far as the lyrics go, I was told they weren't going on, three people can testify. I wouldn't say, I swear a lot, man, outside my office, but I would not, I had a recording, I wanted to play it, and with the lovely politics going on now, to find out public funding, it's going for those lyrics? You need to change this, but come to us. This is what we've evolved, this is what the ordinance sounds like. What do you think? We're your neighbors, I've heard a lot of rhetoric around that, but brass tacks, haven't seen it yet, Kim Vine's an exception. Last fall, she came down, she heard a horrendous sound, and she heard it when it was quiet. So want to make that note. The proposed increase from sixteen to a hundred sixty hours of use on the plastic field, that's the athletic director's statistics. So we're going to have a lot more use of that PA system, and there are going to be a higher incidence of a chance for the wrong kind of lyrics to be played. I'm glad there's going to be some code enforcement, sometimes I would send emails, I said it before, Jeff always returned them, but the other players, I went six months without getting a response. It's got to change, or it's going to move into another sphere, beyond a community talking things out. That's number one. Number two, this business about drainage, I'm glad to hear something is going to be tested, because I've been here before and at the other school meetings, and there is hesitation to test the drainage. We have not turf, that is plastic turf. Turf by definition is an organic compound. We had this discussion, you said, in the field, they call it turf. On the websites, they don't call it turf, because it would be misrepresentation of a product subject to being sued. This is artificial turf. And with it, okay, you're locating it, I said it last time, in an area where more children and adults are going to be exposed to the contaminants than anywhere in North Yarmouth and Cumberland, in that density. It's not where Yarmouth is, it's not where Falmouth is. So if you're going to start testing the runoff from that field, and we're talking not just PFAS, we're talking other microplastics, if this is going to happen, good, and I suggest to get done, you have a test sample now, soil, air, drainage runoff, you have a base test sample now, to compare it to the change in the concentrations of the microplastics. You have a great filtration system, back it up with the testing. I'm very suspicious. And I will also say, one of the two companies that have accepted bids, they've been sued for product liability. Two years ago, the town I grew up with in Connecticut, thank God I left Connecticut thirty-five years ago, but the town I grew up in, they were promised no PFAS, guess what? There's PFAS in the material. So all the more, we need more vigilance, we need more testing of the runoff. The pipe, last I heard, was going to end in our neighborhood on Meadow Lane, then there's talk of extending the drainage pipe into so-called undeveloped property. Well, it's not that undeveloped, you're having more houses coming in. So we need to have scientific testing of the drainage and runoff that's going, as well as a committed program of maintenance for the filtration system in place, if this is going to go forward. And again, thanks for hearing me out, I hear there's some changes about the noise, et cetera, et cetera. We'll see. Talk to your neighbors, include us, please. And thank you very much this evening for your patience, and I'll put this back on.
Thank you.
Mercy.
Would anybody else, yes, Mr. Dome.
Rick Dome for Cattell Palaine. I'm disappointed to find that I apparently missed the original conversations around my topic, which is drainage off the school district campus in December, I'm not sure what happened, but that's on me. So, I live across the street here, and we are fortunate, if that's your standard, to receive, I think, pretty much all of the drainage that comes off the campus, both that which comes off below the Wilson School and down through Cumberland Common, as well as what comes off and runs down ultimately past Valhalla, and those two streams come together on my property. We've seen a considerable increase over the last twenty years in the amount of water that we're, is coming across the property during high-water events, and to some degree there's been siltation associated with that, and certainly a lot of erosion. I reached out to Jeff back last summer about this, and at the time, there wasn't a lot of hard information, and I also talked to the town and Chris, and there was some investigation of what was going on at the point of, points where the water leaves the property, but I'm not familiar what has transpired. So my, aside from raising the concern about what is changing, if anything, around onsite retention of stormwater and the, the amount of impervious surface that is being added, I'm just looking to know if there's anything that quantifies additional flows off the property and the timing of those flows, whether they're being retained or anything of that nature.
Pat, could you have kind of arrange an audience, because Rick is a, is the downfield kind of recipient on this, and just wonder if you could arrange some time for Andy with Rick, because we've got a really good presentation from their hydrologist, really explaining real numbers on what was happening, issues that the town needed to deal with, and it was a, it was a real educational thing, and I think if you could arrange some time with Andy-
You want to give me your contact info? Yeah, I'd love to.
Yeah, also, I would say that, I think, it was at the December meeting, and our meetings are recorded, and, and I highly encourage you to watch it, because I learned more in that presentation about stormwater flow, it, flow, you know, geography of the, of the site in terms of the history of the school site and the site where the housing is now built. So I mean, it was very comprehensive, and it, and it really showed what, what you're dealing with in the neighborhood. And I think it, it also addressed what I think Mr. Sturgis has, has spoke to earlier, what things the town is going to do in terms of cleaning out swales and, and helping with the drainage as well, so.
No, that'd be great, and I-
But check in with that, because I'll tell you, we, we were just mesmerized, it was kind of like the hydrologist that spoke when we were doing the Rusty Lantern, and was telling us the hydrology of Upper West Cumberland, and then when Andy came in, it was like, you know, the, the waters part, you know, he explained it, and something that we could understand, so watch that, and also, when you need to talk to Andy, do, and also with, with Matt, because I think between the three of them, a lot of those concerns and information will be there, and you deserve it.
Oh, thank you, appreciate that.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, everyone. So I am the owner of 363 Tuttle Road, and I just wanted to ask a couple of questions about the access, especially since it seems like construction is going to take place right alongside that property. So just to clarify something that Carol Associates said, I own map eleven lot six, which does include the easement, the school does not own the easement, so currently, there is a temporary road that shares an apron with my driveway. And to be honest, that road was not well done, it was only put in as a measure to allow the previous owner, you know, access to the lot, to show it to potential buyers. So now there's going to be a lot of construction happening, and again, it shares the apron with my driveway. So my question is, what plans are in place or going to be in place to put in something more substantial, permanent? And the other reason this road is, or this driveway is not well done is, in heavy rains, we actually have some pooling of water on our side of the driveway, so I imagine with construction, it's going to be even more so.
Pat, can you answer a question on that?
If you wanted me to do that now?
Yes, yeah, that's kind of one of the things that we've done here in the last four or five months, if there's some legitimate stuff that comes up, we've got an expert in, in-house, so why let this thing dangling? So go ahead, Pat.
Sure, and just one other quick thing, and then I'll sit. We also, you know, so we're-
Let me just zoom in on that.
Sure. All right, so, here we are. So the-
This is your driveway.
Yeah, that's the driveway and-
This is the temporary driveway.
That's the temporary driveway.
This is your driveway into your-
Correct.
Correct.
Yep.
So the idea is that-
Can you get towards the, to the-
Sure, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The idea is that, you know, we would, we would like to use this, this is, this is the easement area here, within these dash lines, I believe. So we have, we have legal access to use that for access to the property-
Sure.
-which is fine. The intent would be to utilize that existing driveway location, we would probably build that up with, you know, more gravel and so forth, in order to support the weight of construction equipment, dump trucks, tractor trailers bringing material in and so forth.
Hey, Pat, do you mind using the microphone, please?
I'm sorry. So, so this, this would be built up, there would be, and I know typically it's on civil engineers' drawings, but there will be a, what's called a stabilized construction entrance that's utilized in this area, and it's, it's a, it's an area where it's built up with larger stone, and the whole idea behind that is that as trucks come off, off the, the construction site, they roll over that stone, and it, and it knocks the mud and, and stuff off their, off their wheels before it gets out on the main road. So the idea is to try to discourage any kind of sedimentation or soil dropping off these trucks and tracking up on, on Tuttle Road. So there probably will be some reconstruction ultimately at the end, that's going to be required at the driveway, because this is probably going to get kind of torn up during construction. But I'm sure that, you know, we will, we will rebuild that to whatever standards we need to, probably the town standards, because most of it's in the town right of way. And during construction, this area will be fenced off and gated, so that there's not going to be, you know, unauthorized access into the site. There'll be a six-foot construction fencing that, that comes down along, it might not come to the entire width of the easement, but it'll, it'll come at least along the driveway area here. There'll be a double gate here that'll be open during construction hours, and closed and locked when it's not in use. And any other questions?
So, so the plan is to continue using our apron? Is that what you're saying?
Well, we could, I mean, I guess if, 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 I mean, we could, I mean, the easiest thing is to use this, this curb cut that's there now. If desired, we could just bring this in straight down, create a new curb cut out here, and keep totally separate from, from you, if that's- That's preferable. Is that preferable? Yeah. Okay. We could look at that.
And final note, we do agree with Steve in regards to the buffer and, you know, needing some good fencing on our side as well.
Yeah, and you can see here, here's the privacy fence, it's shown wrapping around here, there will be a ten-foot gate here that'll be locked, and that's, that's really for emergency use only? We did talk with the fire chief initially about bringing a fire lane, all the way, paved fire lane all the way out, and he said no, and the reason for that is because he doesn't want to encourage, and I don't think the district wants to encourage, any kind of public use of this to gain access to the school.
Sure, that's understandable. Okay.
So we, we both, so I'm Tony Stevens, I also live at 363, we both work from home, and this is going to be a year and a half construction.
Yeah.
It's going to be pretty loud, I'm assuming.
It is.
So, like, I'm just trying to figure out, like, I mean-
Headphones.
Yeah, but I'm on calls and-
Right.
You know, so I'm just, I'm concerned about that.
Yeah, I don't know, I know that, you know, once, once the building foundation is in place here, that probably use of this for construction access will probably drop way off.
Okay.
I think the, the idea is that initially, it allows construction access in here when they're, when they're kind of clearing and grubbing and getting the site ready.
Right.
But once this building goes in, it's really going to begin to restrict access through here to other parts of the site, so it's not really going to be beneficial to use this for anything other than kind of doing work in this area.
Okay.
So most of the construction activity and access will come in off of Main Street.
Got it, okay.
So your folks all set? As best could be?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Pat. Bridget, do we need to do anything with regard to-
One more question.
Oh, I know, I just have, I just, to, to continue, to continue this, do we need to do anything just to make sure that, you know, after all the trucks and all this stuff is done, to make, ensure that that whole driveway and everything is brought up, or is that something the town can do since it's on a town right of way? I just want to make sure that at the end of the day, after this thing is done, that the, that right of way and everything gets restored.
Okay. I think that you can, I mean, we can put something in place to say what it goes back to, I mean, goes it back to original condition as it is now?
I think, I think the plan is to do that, I think-
Okay.
Doesn't your, don't your erosion control plans say to restore that back to, I think, I think they do, they say to restore this back to its original condition.
Well, just so, just so that as part of, when the town is reviewing the final plan, that that's in there, that that should do it.
Yeah, and we've asked the town engineer to be here tonight, I don't know if you recall seeing that in the erosion control plan?
I don't know if you recall seeing that in the erosion control plan?
I, I do, but I also would recommend a condition that the drive be put back to existing condition and that any impact to the public infrastructure from construction vehicles entering and leaving that, that driveway be repaired to existing condition as well.
Okay. So can you add that in? Question.
Is it really going back to existing condition? I think when you originally spoke, it may actually get improved somewhat in order to allow for emergency vehicle access, which might, that the existing condition may not be so great for.
Well, it'll be, it'll be improved subsurfacingly, but on, on the surface itself, it's going to be vegetated, so it won't, it's not going to look like a gravel driveway out there. It'll be what, I mean, we call it a vegetated gravel or a...
Well, and my guess is that may actually help with some of the drainage because you're going to put sub base in and everything out.
Right. But I think the concern is going to be and, and, you know, we're, we're more than willing to kind of repair anything that happens within a public right of way here. There's some curbing. Uh, this driveway has to be maintained and we're probably going to end up having to remove some of the curbing and create kind of a temporary condition here, here to get into the site. So we'll look at that. I mean, that's, that's clearly something that's doable and, and I think if we can provide some separation so that they can come and go out of their, their driveway without impacting construction site, that's, that's beneficial to everybody.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Steve Pardue. I live at 367 Tuttle Road. It was spoken about earlier about there was, you know, I, I agreed, when this, when this project first started and was voted on, I, I reached out to the school even before then and said I had some concerns about the buffering and that the playground and that access road and what they were going to do there. And as far as agreeing for any planting on my property, what I had mentioned was the previous to the school's landowner temporarily added a drive, which according to code enforcement was not up to grade for anything out there and that if, it would have to be changed later on. He removed a tree right on the property line. It was like a great line of demarcation and I asked him, can you please not remove that? And he says, well, I need it to get this road in, a road that he never got approval for, a, a temporary approval. I said, if you need to remove it, I'll pay to remove it, but it, it's kind of an, you know, it breaks up the site and you want to, at the time, wanted to put housing in back there. And he cut it down and then they took it and, and pulled it off with a bulldozer, the stump, and it was so close to my property that it ripped out my property like 25 feet in and created a big concave, which he did fix. But that was the point that I made to Pat was, can you put that tree back? You know, put a tree similar back. It blocked a lot of that view. And he said, well, you know, it's really tight on space and I don't think we could. I said, well, you could put it on my property. And he was like, you'd let us do that? And I'm like, yes. Well, fast forward to what I see now, there is... This is a 15-foot section and my concern was at some point, I read in one of the things, that was an easement coordinated with the budding landowner. I at no time agreed to any kind of easement. So, and then they were supposed to get back to me after a meeting in July and I never heard. And then all of a sudden, there's 10 trees supposedly going to be planted and I just, I think the buffering should happen on the school property. You know, and, and I've been told separate times that, that, you know, as far as site plan review goes, that they're meeting the standard by putting a fence. Well, the size and scope of this building, I would equate it to a square peg in a round hole. They are conforming to my lot line and putting the least amount of vegetative buffer on my whole back lot line than anywhere else on the site plan. And I just, you know, I asked that you, you guys, you know, enforce the town center design standards, which call for, um, the goal of it is to protect abutting residential properties through sensitive in site planning, buffering and building design. And I submit that there is not enough buffering there, the way it is. And what we agreed to back in June was an eight-foot tall fence and in the latest plan, it says six-foot PVC. I asked for wood. And right now, that fence is currently exactly on my lot line. It, there, it's not set back three feet, it's not set back two, it is set right on my property line. So there is no maintenance the school can do without accessing my property, through my property. So, you know, I asked if they could set the fence back, but they're dealing with such a minimal amount of space for buffering, you know, that they can't do that. So, you know, again, you know, I think that goes against the town center design standards that was set up by the, you know, dated back in 2011. And before this project, the previous landowner, I was assured when I bought my house and I added an addition on it, that the 2.3 acres out back could only ever have two or three houses due to the town center standards. And the buffering that they were trying to get a waiver on, you guys sent it back to the, a couple of times because they were trying to get away from doing the amount of buffering that was required to put in the residential things. Well, fast forward now, we're putting in a commercial building with basically no buffering. And I have a problem with that. I mean, it's going to decrease my property value. The, the playground for the primary school is right there and, you know, as far as sound, they talked about it is over here. Well, how about a playground that's going to have normal sound occurrences every day? And I'm not opposed to the school. I'll go on record as saying that. I'm opposed to the size and scope and the amount of buffering that has been placed on their side of the property. So, um, and the, the other thing, this access road, the other thing I'll call attention to is the elementary school is right here. All those children that walk to school, walk down the sidewalk right here, you're going to have a construction entrance right there during school hours? I mean, that, that seems like a safety concern to me. How are those kids going to, you know, safely, you know, what's going to, how is that going to be monitored? And to me, that was the first I heard of it. I read something on the MSAD site. It wasn't ever brought up in the, the planning before. You know, they, they did say something about an access. So I just wanted to go on record and say that quite a bit changed with the proposal of adding trees and, and what I was told it's to my benefit. They don't have to do that. Well, I say, look at the town center standards and I think they have to come up with something more robust. They did negotiate with one abutter that I know of and paid a lot of money to get property and, but not the other two. Nobody came in and said, hey, Steve, you want to give us 15 feet so we can put in a proper buffer? That was never mentioned. And so now, you know, I know it's been voted and it's going to go through. I just need, you know, the right amount of buffering so that, you know, according to this, that, uh, under landscaping, it says the developer shall provide adequate landscaping to ensure the views from Main Street and abutting properties are attractive and to buffer the presence of the parking and buildings. It says right there. So what, what is their buffer plan besides using my property? You know, and that's only because, you know, I said I wanted it, but it shouldn't have to be just on my property. And that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
My name's Garrel Crowe. I live at 20 Skillens Road. I think it's a great school district. My wife and I both graduated from this school district. Both our children have now two. It sounds like you want to give a waiver for parking. We're already tight on parking. I don't see any snow storage on the plan and with tight parking as it is, when it does snow, like we see out there right now, you're going to start losing a lot of parking and snow removal is very expensive. So I think we're really going to consider trying to find some more parking spots to accommodate some of that. That's real, all I have on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Just zoom this back out for you.
My name's Deb Dugas and I live at 312 Main Street directly across from the Greeley High School entrance exits. I have a couple of questions about the earlier presentation. Can you clarify, were the portables at the Wilson School, on the picture it showed five with two shaded, were you implying that those will remain in addition to two more?
Only through construction, only for the next two years.
Which construction? Of the Mabel I Wilson School or the whole project?
The whole project.
Which could be...
Two years.
Okay.
Two years.
Okay, so there, there would be two in addition to the, the ones that are there now? Okay. And, and are those supposedly taking the students that would be in that new school? The pre-K to first grade?
Taking the additional students.
If you could go up, Pat, if you could go up to the...
They're taking the additional students that are projected to be in the middle school. None of the school's population is changing until this new school is operating.
Right. I was just...
So for the, for the period of time during construction, the middle school needs additional classroom space.
And that wasn't projected prior to now?
It was projected and in fact, we have an approval to put a 12-classroom portable building on that site now.
Right.
We got that approval two years ago.
And is that happening?
No, because we're, we're shifting to these smaller buildings because we don't need the big 12 unit building.
Okay, that clarifies.
Okay.
That was my question. My other concern and question was with the arsenic-laden soil that's being moved. I now live on Main Street across from the school. I grew up on Farrell Avenue that abuts the back fields there where the middle, middle school and the athletic fields and things are now. And I was there when it was an orchard. You talked about digging a hole eight feet deep and putting this contaminated soil there with a foot of clean soil above it, but then you, you had a squiggly line there where you said there'd be a berm that would extend down. Would that also be eight feet deep or would that just be piled up and covered?
Let me show you. If I can get to the right drawing here. So this area right here is where the, the area that we dug out and soil will be buried underneath. That's, that area contains about two-thirds to three-quarters of the soil that's going to be, come off of this site. The berm area is this and it's, there's a big slope here. If you, if you're familiar, there's quite a bit of drop, 10 or 12 feet from the game field down to the middle school field. This back corner will be actually extended out here and within this berm zone is where that other 25 to 30% of the soil will be buried. This, this will be, you know, one, two, three, four, five, five feet or so high. It'll be, it'll have that soil in it, but again, it'll be encapsulated with at least 12 inches of loam over the top of it.
Okay, okay. And in relation to where that berm will be, where was the drainage that was going down towards the ponds?
It's, it's right here. There's a drain, there's a drain manhole right here that connects to a whole drainage system that runs along this side of the middle school field. This collects back into here. It's going to pick up all of the drainage that's on the field and it comes down through here to a manhole and then it goes from here into the pond.
Got it, yeah.
Then behind that, there's actually a, an open swale that currently picks up drainage and it continues to run down and it runs down behind the pond and down over kind of in that direction.
Yep.
We're not touching any of that because a lot of that is existing vegetation in there and we want to try to keep that and we're, we're just picking up all the drainage in front of it so that that's, that's just there almost as a safety mechanism, but it's not really picking up much drainage.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to comment? If not, then I'm going to close. Yes, Bob.
I'm Bill, Cumberland Town Council. I can't help but make a couple of comments and I heard a lot of comments while this process was going on and a lot of people talked about how important the school was and how we needed to get rid of the portable classrooms. And I just want to say, Superintendent, education, nobody's going to remember whether they spent time in a portable classroom or whether they spent time in a brand-new school building. What they will remember is the quality of their teachers and the quality of the education. My kids went through Greeley and, in portable classrooms and they don't remember that piece of it. They remember the quality of the teachers and the quality of the education. That being said, a couple of years ago, I had an opportunity to go and speak to the town, the school board about a, a book that was pretty controversial at the time and my comment to the, to the school board at the time was that they, they were the gatekeepers. There was, I, I use a different term, but I can't recall it tonight, but, you know, the buck stopped with the school board and it does with you folks here tonight. The, the comments that I've heard about drainage, about buffering, about the relationship with the school, with the neighbors, your job is of utmost importance here with this application. My, my concern is with the abutting used to the, to the cemetery. Those folks don't have a voice anymore, but they were the people that were the leaders and the movers and the shakers of the community that has since passed them by by, by hundreds of years. But we do owe them the dignity to preserve a space for them that is quiet, peaceful and has the appropriate buffering, as does the neighbors who, who are still alive. And so I am concerned about how that plays out, but again, I think that the, the, the duty of the planning board with this application can't be overstated enough to respect for the neighbors, respect for how we, we, this is most industrial use in this community, size and scale, scope, with the exception of Fair Week at the, the fairgrounds. And so I think we really have to be really concerned about how we, how we play with the neighbors, what the long-term results of the decisions that come out of the planning board, and I know you guys are going to do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anybody else wish to speak? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and thank everybody for their thoughts and also the other folks coming up and hopefully answering the questions. So, uh, what is the, where does the board want to go on this? We've got a ton of, looks like we've got a ton of standard conditions. Why don't we do this? Why don't we, first of all, just so we know what base we're on, summarize what standards of condition? Or do you want to deal with the waivers, Josh?
Waivers.
Okay, so we'll deal with the waivers first.
I think I, I'm happy to make motions for waivers in regards to the flat roof and the metal siding. I think it's kind of hard to approve a... I think it's kind of hard to approve a blanket waiver, not really knowing a little more detail as to what it will be, what it will look like, what that detail is. In the past, Carla was comfortable kind of taking on that responsibility, that we would do a waiver and we'd do a condition of approval, that the planner would approve the final design conditions.
Hi, I mean, they proposed elevations. Are you not okay with the elevations that were proposed?
I mean, we kind of, we only saw one, I didn't see a lot of detail on the elevations of those two. I may be looking, I mean, it was a big packet, but when, is there one out there?
There's elevations in there towards the end. There aren't, they aren't very detailed. No, you're right.
I mean, I'll make the motion, we can have the discussion. I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, we can add in.
I am not a good, I, my personal opinion is I'm not a design person, so I don't have a huge feeling one way or the other about those waivers, but.
Alternatively, it is in the planning board's purview to waive the entire town center design standard for this building on this parcel. I'm putting it out there as an option for you.
I'm not.
No, I'm not crazy about that idea.
I'm totally fine.
No, I mean, I'm okay with what is in there.
Okay.
Yeah. I would do the, I would put, I would put the waivers as presented out and let's see what the board wants to do with them. That would be my solution.
Okay, but, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
I think, so go ahead if you would like to make your motions on that and then we'll discuss.
I will make a motion that we, that due to the unique characteristics of the project and the property, that we provide a waiver from the parking requirements in chapter 315-57 to allow for 871 parking spaces instead of the required 1,070 parking spaces.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, further discussion. Hearing none, are we ready for a vote? All in favor? Opposed? Then that waiver is granted. Next.
I will make a motion that due to the unique characteristics of the project and the property, that we provide a waiver from the roof requirements, roof design requirements from the town center district design standards, 3016-315C, section 2.1.1, to allow a flat roof.
Hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay. One opposed, I apologize.
That's okay. I will make a motion that due to the unique characteristics of the property and the project, that we provide a waiver from the building materials requirement from the TCD design standards, 3016-315C, section 2.1.4, to allow for metal siding on the second floor of the building.
Can I hear a second on that one?
Second.
Quick discussion. Pat, is that, that's not exactly the way the waiver was, but I think you were only looking for metal roofing on the second floor, does that?
That's correct. The first floor of the building will all be masonry.
Okay, thank you.
And that's been seconded. That one was slightly squishy, but on the other hand, declare tremendous moral victory. And are we ready for a vote? Yes, we are, all in favor? Opposed? It's voted, so the waivers have been granted. So Josh, does it make sense to go through these conditions of approval so we know what base we're on before we go through the findings of fact?
I think so.
Yeah, because I.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So Bridget, can you walk us through those? We may have to do some on the fly.
Well, we've got several additional.
One, a usage guideline or policy document addressing the public addressing system will be provided and acceptable to the town manager prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the artificial turf field. I heard discussion tonight that said that there will be a turf field usage policy to include use of the public addressing system. Would you like me to change that to turf, artificial turf field usage policy prior to the certificate of occupancy?
Yeah, and that should.
We should see the whole thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that the noise and the regulation of it is covered. The board all right with that?
Yeah, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we still do not have a noise ordinance in Cumberland.
That's correct, we do not have a noise ordinance.
Yes, you do, but only in the TCD.
What is it?
I'll give you the page number later. Seventy-five decibels in the TCD.
Oh, okay, so within the zone that we're talking.
We are not within the TCD. The turf field is not within the TCD.
It is not, okay. So that does not, that ordinance does not apply to this, okay.
No, but the use policy would.
Yeah, I'm only voicing a concern is because clearly we have three areas that we've had the most feedback on. Noise, drainage, and.
Buffering.
Buffering, yeah.
Right, and, but I would say that because this is a proposed condition of approval, when we get that, that then basically becomes a noise standard for this project.
Right.
Because it's part of the site plan review.
Got it.
Very good.
Question on that, what about the timing of that? Would the field's going to be done for the fall and the project doesn't complete until two years later?
They've got to get it, it's for the certificate of occupancy of the field itself.
For the field itself.
Yeah, they won't be able to play on it without the CEO.
Good, good catch. Okay, what's our next one?
Okay. The main DEP SLOTA permit must be submitted to the town prior to the pre-construction conference. And that applies to any, that applies to the field.
Okay.
So for the field to break ground, the SLOTA permit must, we must have that. The M.TMP, the traffic movement permit, is required to be submitted to the town prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy. So unlike a SLOTA permit, the traffic movement permit is not really required until the building has been built. So that's in the works, we got an update tonight. The applicant will design a new pre-K through one school sign that complies with chapter 315-63 and the TCD design standards and submit a signed permit application to the town prior to sign installation. Upon receipt of all applicable state and local permits and before the pre-construction meeting is held, the town's peer review engineer shall confirm all local and state permit comments are addressed. The applicant shall address all outstanding and additional peer review comments prior to the pre-construction conference. The applicant shall provide revised complete plans with the updated road curbing and temporary buildings, which will be subject to review and approval by the town's engineer. This condition shall meet the satisfaction of the town prior to the pre-construction conference.
So.
That's in regards specifically to some of the changes that we addressed from Chief Small. And I had asked Pat to put the temporary structures back on the site plan so that we would approve it, mark them as temporary. There's another condition of approval to speak to the removal of the temporary buildings, just so that we will have it all covered.
So they have to get those two portable classrooms out of there, is that right?
Yeah, but they have to be in the final plan submission as we're like going through the details, back and forth with the engineers, just making sure that all of the plans have been updated to our satisfaction.
So we have an enforcement thing to, to make sure that those last two portable classrooms are gone? I mean, we need to.
I built that into a.
Into another condition of approval?
My suggestion for an additional condition of approval while we're talking on that would be to remove the temporary buildings prior to the certificate of occupancy for the new pre-K through one school.
So that's one of them, one of the new ones?
Yeah.
Okay.
One of the new ones or? First of all, Peter, do you want removal of the two new temporary classrooms or all of, the two new plus the three existing?
I guess the key is that I just want them all off there. So there are zero portable classrooms on the campus and.
Is that, is the intent that once all of the buildings are completed, all of the temporary classrooms will be removed?
Yes.
Or the five that are shown over by the middle school?
There's three, currently three at the middle school. We're going to add two more.
Right, and are the.
There's currently two at Mabel Wilson. Those will also disappear.
Okay, so no temporary classrooms immediately after? We'll wait at least like a year or two before we start adding them back?
At occupancy. And when we need new classrooms, we're going to build them on.
On top of Mabel I Wilson. I love that idea.
So we can say somehow on the standard there is all portable classrooms must be removed, some language.
Prior to a certificate of occupancy.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, the only, well, you're going to have a certificate of occupancy for.
Each time you pull a building permit, which would be each building, you would have to have a certificate of occupancy.
Correct, but I would say let's do a certificate of occupancy for the new building because until they get that, it's going to be hard to move kids around.
Yeah.
So even if they get the middle school done and get a certificate of occupancy of that, that doesn't mean they don't need to use the portable classrooms for the middle school. So.
That'll make sense.
Pre-K through one, certificate of occupancy.
What other ones do we have?
But that's an additional one, so now we're up to 11, correct? Because you're not adjusting seven.
Correct. It's just related to seven.
So this is number 11?
No, we're back to eight, right?
Eight. An electronic, an electronic copy of the as-built plan shall be submitted to the town planner prior to the issuance of certificates of occupancy. All clearing limits shall be flagged and approved by the town engineer prior to the pre-construction conference and a pre-construction conference is required prior to the start of construction.
Okay, so then 11 is your temporary classrooms removal. We need an MDEP VRAP permit update, whatever, for the contaminated soils.
Yep.
So that's 12?
Prior to the, Pat, I'll look to you, prior to the pre-construction conference, would you have that? For the new field?
Yeah, I think it should probably be tied to, you know, it's a DEP permit, so it's probably on the same time track as.
SLOTA.
As SLOTA.
Okay.
And we wouldn't start any construction until we have both of those in hand.
Have you submitted the VRAP permit application? Have you submitted the VRAP permit application?
No, I talked to the engineers today and they're, they're ready to submit it next week.
Okay, cool.
They just need a couple of little exhibits.
So.
All right, I've got two more.
Okay, and then I'll tell you what I've got.
Okay, I've got a modification to the landscaping plan in the area of the abutting property of Steve Pardue to be approved by the town planner in consultation with the applicant and the abutter.
Very good, because I was going to say we've got to deal with the, we've got to deal with the buffering on that, so good, good call.
Okay, so that, we're putting that squarely on your shoulders, sorry Bridget.
Okay.
Or I'm putting that squarely on your shoulders. We'll see if the rest of the board wants to do that.
Feeling the pressure.
And then.
Need to add in anything in relation to the temporary road and any of that stuff?
Got one more.
Oh, that's the separate one?
Return temporary construction access off of Tuttle Road to existing conditions.
Map U11 lot 6.
Okay.
Was it existing?
What's that?
Existing, we talked about vegetated gravel driveway.
I'm, I mean, what they, what our engineer said was, his suggestion was to go back to existing conditions, which I believe it is.
Yeah, that's what they said.
Vegetated driveway. And quite honestly, I think it's probably going to be a little bit better because they're going to have a sub-base and everything else. The road's going to be better, it's going to have drainage, but.
Yeah, I thought it was a little bit better.
I mean, we're getting into very, but I think what the engineers are saying is from looking at it, it's going to, what we want is it to look like it does right now after they remediate.
Well, I hope it looks a little better.
I don't think anything in the two existing, two existing conditions are improved.
Is that it?
And speaking of that, no, and speaking of that, this, yeah, I, and speaking of also the Mr. Pardue's landscaping. Yeah, I want to express some concern about the construction and the kids walking on that sidewalk. I hope there will be some, we don't have crossing guards, we don't have, you know, there'd be some supervision or some attempt not to, I mean, I was walking through town the other day with my two dogs. I think it must have been between 3:00 and 3:30. And it was miserable trying to walk with two dogs through town at that time. And of course, it's winter, but I thought, no, the kids can't walk to school. How can they walk to school? No wonder everybody drives. So just a comment.
So are we through all of the conditions of approval that we know of?
You know, do you have any more, Bridget?
No, that's it, that's all I have.
What is the total there?
14.
14, thank you.
So are we ready to proceed?
Could you just read again what it, relating to the two abutters, what we're doing? Mr. Pardue.
So one is the modification to the landscaping plan in the area of the abutting property of Steve Pardue to be approved by the town planner in consultation with the applicant and the abutter. And then the other one is to return temporary construction access off of Tuttle Road, map U11-06?
Lot 6, yep.
Wow, that was pretty good, huh?
Yeah.
Off of Tuttle Road, map U11 lot 6, to existing conditions or improved.
Before we vote on that, Josh, you know, I know we talked about, excuse me, I know we talked about a shared apron on the residence property. If that's paved, can we just include any damage to pavement returning to original condition as well? Because I know we've talked about gravel, but.
I think, yep, so return temporary construction access and the, and the shared apron off of Tuttle Road to existing conditions or improved?
Okay. The, well, normally I don't open the public hearing, but on the other hand, since it affects you, come on up and let us know what your concern is because, because this last one is kind of done at your request.
So I thought we had agreed that we were not going to have a shared apron and they were going to move the access over to the left. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I think what we're saying is if there is damage, they can have the best of intent in that construction process that your apron may get damaged.
Okay.
And so if it does, then they need to repair it. If it doesn't, then.
Yeah, I would suggest that we say anything within the easement area that is damaged by construction, including that area directly adjacent to the right of it, would get, would get repaired.
Okay.
To its, back to its original condition.
Yeah.
Because it may be somehow, even if it's separate, there may be a truck that comes in on your driveway and breaks up some pavement or something and we want to make sure we take care of that.
Okay.
So we all set on that? I will temporarily close, I'll close the public here again.
Bridget, could you read that? Do you have?
We just had one other, one more.
Well, yeah, I mean, we. Well, uh, yeah, I, I, I mean, we've kinda, we, we will go the extra, we're kinda going the extra thing on this.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Go ahead.
So the only thing was, you know, there was mention of buffering with Steve's property, but no, nothing on our side, so we just wanted to make sure that something was in place for our property as well, thank you.
Yeah. Makes sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Okay, so some. Ha, you're, you're looking at me.
Of the abutting proper, properties of Steve Purdue and, sorry, what?
Stevens.
And the Stevens, to be approved by the town planner in consultation with the applicant and the abutters.
Okay. And then we've got on map, U eleven lot six, restore the easement area to existing conditions?
To existing conditions.
Is that, is it that simple, or do we need to say easement area damage during construction?
I think just the whole easement area.
Yep, so restore easement area to existing conditions.
Right, if they don't touch a part of the easement area, it doesn't have to get restored.
Okay.
And, and dealing with the buffering.
We already.
Yeah, we got that. Landscape, yeah, the landscaping plan already did that. Yep.
All right. Both properties.
Okay, uh.
Still fourteen, correct?
Yep, I mean, this is kind of, uh, you know, normally it isn't, but, uh, lovemaking, sometimes this stuff on the fly, uh, uh, that's kinda unique with us. We don't, uh, we, we don't sometimes completely go to rules if we can solve some of this stuff during, uh, so are we ready to go through the findings of fact? Then Ann, would you lead us to the promised land?
Let's see here, oh, can I?
Yes.
Before you do that, I would suggest that we just swap out the limitation of approval for the expiration of approval.
When, when, assuming I do the motion, I, I will just reference section two twenty-nine dash eleven expiration of approval of the Tumbleland.
Eleven A, yes, book of ordinances.
Eleven, oh, oh.
Two, two-two-nine, eleven.
I don't think there's a B.
A, there is a B, it applies only to agricultural-related projects.
Oh, sorry, eleven A, thank you.
You will part the red.
Two-twenty-nine dash eleven A.
You, perfect.
You will part the red C at the appropriate time.
I don't know about that, but.
Now, before I get started, I wanna make sure that I have the right version. I, I will be reading from your February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
If you open the one from the agenda, you will have the right version, so if you.
The, the one from February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five is correct.
Yeah, that's the one.
Okay, yeah, that's what I did, yes.
And then just, let's, if there's anything that we need to adjust.
Right.
Based on our conversation tonight, we'll talk through that.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so this is the first time I've done this, and, um, I should start with, um, we've already done the waivers and modifications, uh, I don't have to read the department head review stuff, right? I just go to site plan review, right?
Yep.
Okay, site plan review, approval standards and criteria. A, uh, section, okay, can I get started anyhow? Okay, section ten, approval standards and criteria. A, utilization of the site. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied because the proposed new school building is to be located on the southwest corner of the campus, directly south of the high school. It is envisioned as a mostly one-story building with a building form that reflects the site configuration and orientation for optimum daylighting and solar access. The location completes the four quadrants of the Greeley campus and provides strong visibility and physical connection to all parts of the campus. The proposed project will not have any additional effect on the environment or existing conditions. B, traffic circulation and parking. With the approved waiver, the planning board finds this standard is satisfied because the accesses to the site from Main Street and Tuttle Road will remain unchanged. Internal circulation has been rearranged to provide stronger flow through the campus and provide safe, dedicated parking and drop-off areas adjacent, but separated from the general site traffic flow, preventing vehicle backups. Overall parking has been restructured with dedicated staff, visitors, students, and drop-off areas adjacent to each school. The overall parking on the campus will increase from seven hundred and thirty-nine to eight hundred and seventy-one spaces to accommodate the new school programs and anticipated growth of the campus. The planning board finds pedestrian circulation has been designed to provide strong and safe pedestrian connections to each building and use area throughout the campus. Crosswalks are provided at key locations within and outside the campus. A new sidewalk is proposed along the south side of Tuttle Road between Meadowview and Willow Lane to provide stronger pedestrian access from the adjacent residential neighborhoods, connecting to pedestrian-activated crosswalks along Tuttle Road. C, stormwater management and erosion control. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied because existing drainage patterns will be maintained wherever possible. The existing stormwater basin at the southeast corner of the high school is proposed to be reconfigured as underground storage. A small bioswale will collect and treat runoff from the building and service area at the new school building. The planning board finds that a condition of approval is required. The main DEP SLOTA permit must be submitted to the town prior to the pre-construction conference. And we still don't have that one, right? The planning board finds best management practices for erosion control will be utilized on this project as illustrated on the site plans. D, water, sewer, and fire protection. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied as evidenced by the letter from Portland Water District dated October twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four. E, water protection. The planning board finds the site is located within a town aquifer protection area. The planning board finds that both public water and sewer connections will be utilized. There will be no unordinary storage of hazardous materials and stormwater best management will prevent degradation to groundwater, water quality, and the aquifer. F, floodplain management. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied because the site is not located within a floodplain according to FEMA MAP G, historic and archaeological resources. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied because the campus and new school site was reviewed by the Maine Historic Preservation Commission, and no historic or archaeological resources are known to exist. H, exterior lighting. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied for the new school building because the lighting plan shows that the building's site circulation ways and parking will be lit from new downward-facing pole-mounted and building-mounted lights, utilizing state-of-the-art LED lighting fixtures. The planning board finds that lighting in existing parking lights will be upgraded. I, buffering and landscaping. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied because the proposed project will provide buffering in the neighborhood to the north, south, and west, which is supplemental to the existing vegetation that will be preserved along the adjacent property lines, but don't we have to mention?
Yeah, we need to adjust that.
We need to adjust that.
The proposed condition of approval.
Okay.
The planning board finds the standard is satisfied.
Okay, so we would say that in the beginning, with the proposed condition of approval. Okay. J, noise. With the proposed condition of approval, the planning board finds this standard is satisfied. K, storage of materials. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied because no bulk materials will be stored on site. L, capacity of the applicant. The planning board finds the applicant has financial capacity because the project is funded by bonds issued per public referendum vote approved on June eleventh, twenty twenty-four. The planning board finds the applicant has technical capacity as evidenced by the use of qualified professionals listed in the application packet. M, design and performance standards. Route one hundred design standards not applicable, route one design standards not applicable. Three, town center district design standards applicable on tax assessor map U eleven lot four A. Uh, four, village mixed-use performance standards not applicable. N, town center district design standards. Now, do I need to read these?
Those are findings, um, it's probably good to go through them.
Okay, that's fine.
We might need to change, there's buffering again and landscaping in here.
Okay, no, I think that's good. One point one, site planning and design, one point one, master planning. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied because the new pre-K slash one school integrates with the centralized campus. The planning board finds the new school is oriented internally towards the campus and has a visual connection to the campus with entrances highly visible on the north side and outdoor spaces located on the south side to take advantage of its solar orientation. One point two, professional design. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied because the design team are licensed professionals as evidenced in the application packet and have been involved on the Greeley campus for over twenty years. One point three, vehicular access. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied because the proposed new school will utilize existing curb cuts along Main Street and Tuttle Road. No new curb cuts are proposed. The planning board finds that internal circulation has been modified to provide a separation of the new school parking, drop-off, and arrival areas from the general campus circulation. One point four, building placement. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied because the new school has been sited on the property to respond to the lot configuration and respect the adjacent uses on the three sides not facing the campus. The planning board finds the main entrance is a dominant feature, and the plan complies with the standards and guidelines set in the Americans with Disabilities Act. The planning board finds the new school building meets all lot standard as established in the TCD zoning district. One point five, parking. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied because parking is located on the west side of the building and utilizes natural buffers and landscaping to reduce its visual impact from Main Street. One point six, service areas. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied because the small service area in the southwest corner of the new school will be fenced from outdoor play space for the school and screened from adjacent residential neighbors. It is not anticipated that large service vehicles will access this area. One point seven, open space. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied because an inviting outdoor space is proposed at the main entrance to the school with a covered area providing shelter for students waiting for pickup. The planning board finds that a raised planter will also provide interest in seating. The planning board finds sidewalks and crosswalks create a safe way to connect all parking and drop-off areas to building entrances and outdoor facilities. One point eight, now here.
Yeah, we need to add the, with the proposed condition of approval.
Yep, okay. Buffering of adjacent uses. With the proposed condition of approval, the planning board finds this standard is satisfied because the proposed buffering includes natural buffering along the interface with the town, excuse me, with the town cemetery.
You want me to, uh, you've done yeoman work, I, I can continue.
Okay, go ahead.
And then, uh, just, uh, if we have to add stuff, so where were we, one point eight?
Um, yeah.
So we're done that?
No.
No, not done.
No, 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 why don't you start with the proposed condition of approval, the planning board finds.
Okay, with the proposed, uh, one point eight buffering, with the proposed standard conditions of approval, the planning board finds this standard is satisfied because the proposed buffering includes natural buffering along the interface with the town cemetery and fencing landscaping to provide screening and buffering where adjacent to residential uses. One point nine, erosion, sedimentation, and stormwater management. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied because a detailed erosion and sedimentation control plant has been developed for the school, including temporary and permanent erosion controls to ensure that the site is stable during, in, during and post-construction. Planning board finds a comprehensive stormwater management plan has been developed for the campus that integrates the new building into the existing campus and effectively manages app runoff to the prop, on the property. One point one O, utilities. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied because all utilities to the new building are underground and most is extensions of existing public utilities on campus. Two, architectural design, two point one, building style. With the approved waiver, the planning board finds this standard is satisfied because the proposed school building is a modern approach that is compatible with traditional architectural styles of the older houses in the town center district and complements existing campus buildings. The planning board finds that the new school's modern form with vertical, rectangular, or square windows and minimal embellishments is appropriate for the campus setting. Larger structures. With the approved waiver, the planning board finds this standard is satisfied because the building features varying roof lines and building volumes, which breaks up the massing of the building and helps to reduce the apparent scale to be more appropriate and approachable to the young students it serves. The planning board finds that the school entrance will be highly visible for both the ease of nav, navigation and for security. Signage, three point one sign design, three point two sign type, three point three sign aluminum, illumination. With the condition of approval, to submit a sign permit application to the town prior to installation, the planning board finds that these standards are satisfied. Lighting, four point one, good lighting. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied because a pos, comprehensive site lighting plan has been prepared for the campus that integrates building or pole-mounted, high-performance LED lighting with sharp cutoff fixtures to ensure defined illumination patterns and minimizing glare and spill away from those areas requiring lighting. Four point two. Four point two, the lighting plan. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied because a comprehensive lighting plan for the campus has been provided. Four point three, the planning board finds this standard is satisfied because the lighting plan illustrates appropriate illumination for the new parking driveways and pedestrian ways. So, all that being said, I will look for a motion to adopt the finding of facts as amended.
I will make a motion that we adopt the findings of fact as amended.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been seconded, and any further discussion? Hearing none?
I will make a motion that.
We got to vote for the find, adopt the findings of facts first.
We haven't voted on that?
No.
Yeah, we should probably do that.
So all in favor? Opposed?
It's late.
And moving on.
I make a motion that we approve the amendment to an approved site plan for main school administrative district number fifty-one for the addition of a new pre-kindergarten to first grade school and associated, associated improvements located off Tuttle Road, tax assessor map U eleven lots one, four A, eight, and nine, and off of Main Street, tax assessor map U eleven and U thirteen lots one and one hundred and twelve, subject to the expiration of approval from section two twenty-nine dash eleven A of the Town of Cumberland Charter and Code, the standard condition of approval, and the fourteen proposed conditions of approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Let me ask a question about that approval. Does this mean that the improvements to Mabel I Wilson and, I guess it was Greeley Middle School, that those don't have to come back to us?
That's correct. They'll be allowed to put the two additional temporary buildings. They'll be allowed to take them down.
And they'll be allowed to do the new little addition to Mabel I Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Congratulations. Thank you, SAD fifty-one, Pat, the peer review engineer, all of the neighbors and abutters and the town. Thank you. So, moving on to new business, Bridgette, what's, what's in the calendar for February?
March. For March.
March, it's late.
I can preview one ordinance change that we'll have regarding dwelling unit size. They're looking to reduce dwelling unit size in the zoning ordinance. That came to us from town council. And then I would just like to preview the next town council meeting on Monday, February twenty-fourth. There's a workshop at six PM with a developer who's looking at the Skyview Drive. So I have, I have seen some things, but I'm not going to let any cats out of the bag right now, but they'll, they're coming to town council. So then we'll see them at some point.
Okay, any other new business? Hearing none, I'll.
Wait a minute.
Yes.
This new business, old business. Is anything happening with that building on Route one hundred next to?
Is that what you're talking about?
Oh, the Route, the Route one hundred on Mill Run on Fair Day.
I'm sorry. I'm, yeah, no, not Route one.
By Skilens?
But, yeah, by Skilens.
By Skilens, Route one hundred. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So. No. So the, it was foreclosed on. The bank owns it. They did board it up and like clean it up. We're still holding a performance guarantee. The town is holding a cash escrow on that property. Anything that anyone wants to do with it would have to come back to the planning board because everything is expired. There is some movement from town council and ordinance committee to make the VCC, the Village Commercial Center District, which is really that zone right there in Route one hundred, to allow residential uses, which is actually making it easier for developers to come in. Because if you can couple, and maybe, maybe Bob, you know this better than I do, but if you can couple commercial development with residential development, there's a little bit more of a, there's a better return. Doing commercial development in a small town like ours is more difficult, but coupling it with something that's in higher demand like residential has been more successful for developers is what I've, what I've learned.
Wasn't that, that was done as a mixed use. I'm pretty sure we approved all of that.
It was a condominium office building.
Well, but there were also residential units out back.
And then they changed the ordinance back to disallow it.
What?
Sorry, say that again?
So there was an ordinance change to allow the townhouses in Mill Run, which are the condos in the back of.
Yeah, I remember that.
And then after that was approved, there was some.
Right.
Negative comments. So they changed the ordinance back so that residential is no longer allowed there.
But I'm not sure you can get more residential in that use. That's all, is all I'm saying. I mean, it was originally a mixed use with residential in the back and commercial in the front. I'm willing to listen to any site plan.
Commercial on the bottom, houses on top. I don't know. We'll see what happens. It's not, it's not allowed right now. How big is the building? Two thousand square feet, four thousand square feet? I don't know. I didn't even think that was before I was on the board.
I think it was.
Yeah.
Just before.
Yeah, I was on, one of the things I was on, I can't remember.
What about the mark down on, what about the mark?
So the mark is very close to being finished.
Oh, okay.
They do not have a certificate of occupancy. I understand that they haven't been able to sell or rent any of the units.
It looks nice.
And so I, I, I don't know what's going on, but that's being followed by the code enforcement officer.
Thank you.
So any other new business? Hearing none, thank you for your patience. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Twenty-one sixty.
Josh, I'm not going to steal your thunder.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.